Welcome to the regular meeting of the South Haven City Council. It is Monday, August 19th, 2024. This meeting is called to order. For our invocation, we will have a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call, please, Meghan?
Of course. Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hosley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reeser.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Annie Brown.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Letitia Wilkins?
I move to excuse Letitia Wilkins.
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor say yes.
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 Opposed? She is excused. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Wow, that was easy. All in favor say yes.
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 Opposed? The agenda is approved. Community updates, Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a proclamation for Hayden Wazajizik as well as a presentation from him. Hayden was doing a history presentation, and I guess I don't want to say too much. I think he's done quite a bit. So at this time, I think we'd like to see his presentation, and then we can proceed with the proclamation.
Okay. This is the presentation that Hayden performed for the National History Competition in Washington, DC, at the Smithsonian, and at College Park, Maryland, at the University of Maryland.
I just wanted to see if this is working. Sorry, microphones don't like to work for me sometimes. Hello. I am Hayden Chmukwa-Wazajizik, and this is AIM, the Native Fight Back. The formation of AIM was a turning point in the fight for Native American rights of recognition. The American Indian Movement, from 1969 to 1975, served as a turning point in the way Native Americans were perceived in the US. AIM garnered national attention through protests like the occupation of Alcatraz, the Cho-Burkin Treaties, and the Wounded Knee occupation. AIM is an organization that has liked things like broken treaties, police brutality, and stolen land. They began as a grassroots movement in 1968. Their response to police brutality and racial profiling would later become the turning point behind the Indigenous Civil Rights Movement, or the Red Power Movement. Many cultural battles were raging prior to the formation of AIM. There are Indian fishering battles going on in Washington, Oregon, Iroquois land protests going on in Ontario and New York, and some Red Power activism coming off the West Coast. There was the Termination Act in 1953, where Native Americans were forced off their land and then the land sold. Next came the Relocation Act in 1956, where Native Americans were forced into cities such as Salt Lake City, Chicago, and Minneapolis, where they faced poor, hogsucking conditions, segregation, and discrimination. Boarding schools continued to expand and change the way natives lived, forcing them to come assimilated into American culture. A native named Crazy Horse once said, "We do not interfere with you." And again, you say, "Why not become civilized? We do not want your civilization."
Hello. My name is Dennis Banks, and I'm the founder of the American Indian Movement. In 1966, I was sent to the Stillwater, Minnesota State Prison for five years, where stealing groceries would feed my family. In prison, I researched all the movements going on around the world and realized that natives didn't have a movement, only small local protests. When I was released from prison in May 1968, I called my friend from a Native American boarding school, George Mitchell. I said, "George, I want to get a movement going, and I would like you to help me." I figured out with the two of us, we could set up meetings with the American Indian community in Minneapolis to make the changes that we needed. We started our work in the summer of 1968 by contacting all the natives we knew and went to the Indian sums in the city. We handed out 500 leaflets we had printed to every native we could find and told them, "We need to have a meeting." Our first meeting was on July 28th, 1968, in the basement of our church. When the meeting started, we had almost 200 people there. I said to them, "People are fighting battles in the streets of Chicago. They're fighting to stop the Vietnam War and trying to bring about changes in the political system. They are fighting in the streets of Alabama to change the situation for blacks. The SDS movement is trying to change the whole structure of universities. What are we going to do? Are we going to stay in Minnesota and not do a thing? Are we going to go on for another 200 years the way we are without doing something for our Indian people?" The meeting continued, and more and more people started to speak up. A man named Claude Bellicor spoke about police brutality. He said, "When you propose to go down to Franklin Avenue, to all those Indian bars where the cops abuse our people every night." I said to him, "If we go down there tomorrow morning." "No," he said, "let's go down there right now, tonight." And that meeting, Kai Tokasatschetsi, swept over us like a storm. In that moment, the idea of AIM was born. That night, we held protests about police brutality. We immediately had Claude Bellicor, our first chairman. We first wanted to deal with the police brutality. Only 10% of Minneapolis's population were Native, but 70% of inmates in city jails were also Native. George Clyde had painted our cars red. We established an Indian patrol to stop the harassment. This idea was based off the Black Panthers of Oakland. I rejected violence and other methods of force like the Black Panthers, but I knew we'd do whatever we had to to complete our goals. I don't want AIM to be seen as a group that advocated violence, but on the other hand, I don't want us going against heavily armed forces, cops empty-handed. We first went to the chief of police. We said, "No, there's no racism here." We told him, "We'll prove it to you." We began carrying walk talkies when we identified red braids. We went down to the Indian bars and recorded them arresting our people and hitting them with ice sticks. Later, we emptied all the Indian customers in the bar. By the time the cops showed up, there was nobody left to arrest. The number of arrests would drop dramatically. AIM would go into doing bigger and more impactful protests. And just two years after they started, they already had 5,000 people. One of AIM's biggest and most memorable protests is the occupation of Alcatraz.
Hello. My name is Richard Oakes, and I was the leader of the Alcatraz occupation in 1969. Our first attempt to take down was with a handful of people on November 9th, 1969. We stayed one night before being removed by authorities. In response to our move, I talked to San Francisco Chronicle and said, "If a one-day occupation of white men in Indian land years ago established squatters' rights, then the one-day occupation of Alcatraz should establish Indian rights to the land." We tried again in November 20th, with the power of 89 men, women, and children, and we're finally able to take Alcatraz Island. We tagged buildings graffiti like "Red Power" and "Customer had it coming." We even tagged a lighthouse with "Peace and Freedom: Welcome Home to Free Indian Land." We claimed the island as ours by right discovery and offered to buy it for $24 a glass bead of red cloth, the same price that was offered to them for the island of Manhattan. Were it the fault that could happen if President Nixon's administration tried to remove us from the island, his administration decided to leave us alone, as long as we remain peaceful. In time, government officials came down to negotiate, but were never successful. Eventually, the population of Alcatraz grew to 600 natives, and a governing council was formed. We soon got a clinic, a kitchen, a public relations department, a nursery, and a great school for the children. We even got a security group called the Bureau of Caucasian Affairs. It was a play in the much hated Bureau of Indian Affairs. They patrolled us all and checking for our intruders. We even got a radio show called Radio for Alcatraz by John Truda. In late 1969, that face was going better than I could have ever expected. By 1970, that would change. College students had to leave to continue their studies, and their place was by vagueness, cared more about living rent-free life than original cause. Things would only get worse in January 1970, when my daughter fell down the prison stairwells to her death because of the accident my wife had off Alcatraz. Soon, it'd become a fight control of the island. In May, President Nixon's administration called for power to the island, and a few weeks later, a fire spread across the island, destroying lots of historical buildings. On June 11th, 1971, federal marshals were sent to the island and removed the many natives. The 19-month occupation had been a big push frame as one of the many important occupations. Hello. It's me again, Dennis Banks. A few years after the occupation of Alcatraz, AIM set their eyes on a new place, Wounded Knee. After our actions, tribal president Dick Wilson had banned all AIM activities on the partner's reservation. We instituted ways of leading corrupt, having an occupation of Wounded Knee would cause a federal investigation we launched under his administration. We also opened an investigation we launched on the Bureau of Indian Affairs and Indian Broken Treaties. Wounded Knee also had major historical significance. It was where the Battle of Wounded Knee was, a massacre of Lakota natives by the US Army. On February 27th, 1973, about 200 AIMers who took Wounded Knee and were able to take 11 of Dick Wilson's allies hostage. The next day, we trained gunfire for federal marshals, and I started negotiations to release the hostages. I demanded that they launch investigation on the Bureau of Indian Affairs, all its reservations in South Dakota, and at Senate Foreign Relations Committee, which scores on Indian treaties brokered by the government. Our occupation lasted 71 days, and ended because the White House agreed to investigate our complaints. During that time, two men were shot and killed. Restomendaries that afterwards were then released by a federal judge. In the courts, some tried on settlements from federal and state governments, with some including tribal land claims. For example, in 1971, a chip law family charged an unexpected property tax bill they received from the county containing the reservation. The case went up to the Supreme Court. This case opened up the door for tribes to open up gambling establishments, which are seen as a potential bringing mass amounts of income. AIM also lifted laws such as NAGPA, or the Native American Grant Protection Registration Act, which replaced like museums and universities that returned anything they had, like bones and artifacts, to tribes. In 1974, a gallery was called forward by AIM for all indigenous people in the Western Hemisphere to meet in South Dakota. Over 98 nations arrived and formed the International Indian Treaty Council, which is unrecognized by the UN later that year. With many of its leaders in prison, AIM ended up expanding in 1978. Small countries continued to function out of law and court, but the other's government took no further steps to honor broken Indian treaties. AIM was a turning point in Native American history and led the land bringing attorney natives of broken treaties being rediscovered. AIM also brought awareness that Native American rights can be seen applied at colleges. Over his lifetime, most of his natives didn't support AIM, and some of his ex-convicts. But eventually, AIM would change how Americans and government agents showed respect to Native Americans. Walking in the bones of our people wherever you walk, that's something people need to remember. Sharon Leonard, AIM member.
We now have a proclamation to read for you. Whereas Hayden Chmukwa-Wazajizik, age 13, is a resident of South Haven and a part of the Little Traverse Bay Band of Odawa Indians, and...
Whereas Hayden Wazajizik finished fifth in the nation at National History Day Competition in College Park, Maryland, and...
Whereas Hayden Wazajizik advanced to the National History Day Competition for two consecutive years, and...
Whereas Hayden Wazajizik won best entry in the state of Michigan for juniors at Nationals, and...
And where... Oh, go ahead.
And whereas Hayden Washington won an award for Best Use of Primary Sources 2024 at Regional Competition. Whereas Hayden Wazajizik performed at the Smithsonian and was interviewed by PBS. And whereas Hayden Wazajizik has also been a member of the middle school and high school robotics teams and TRI-M Honor Society and Junior National Honor Society, and he has been an actor since age five with our town players, and...
Now therefore be it resolved that the city of South Haven wishes to recognize Hayden Chmukwa-Wazajizik for his talents and scholarship and his passion for history.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we also need to recognize Julie Shepherd, who is the teacher, the club advisor for National History. She gets students to the national level every year, so she just does wonderful jobs. 15 years.
Annie, can I say one quick word?
Go ahead.
I've been on city council six years, and I will tell you, the nights where we have proclamations for young people, it is the highlight of my being on city council. There's nothing I'd rather do than give awards to young people. I am absolutely blown away by the accomplishment of Hayden and so many other young people, and I'm sure his parents are proud, and it's a pleasure to have him in our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. It is now time for public comment for items on the agenda, excluding items scheduled for public hearing, and you have up to five minutes. I want to remind you that when you're making comments, please show respect for city council and our city staff in your comments and your actions. And for the people in the audience, please listen carefully and give your attention to the people who are speaking. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lois Hedman, and my husband and I own a home at 89 Superior Street. We rent our home out for several weeks in the summer. Otherwise, we are here about three days a week for the rest of the year. I'm here to speak about item 11, the STR proposal, and we have a few questions and concerns. First is, what is the definition of commercial use? I did not see that defined in the glossary. And from previous council meetings, it seems like this is meant to be running a business in a residential neighborhood. And we're wondering if this designation covers other people with home offices, like CPAs or writers or artists. On the top of page two of the proposal, it states, and I quote, "Short-term rental properties must be regulated accordingly." We're wondering why this is not stated more narrowly, such as short-term rental activity must be regulated. The way it's currently stated, it appears to us that these regulations apply even when a property is not being rented out. On pages nine to 10, it states that the STR notice must be posted at all times, and we're wondering, is this when the property is being rented, or is it all year long? In the off-season, such a notice could be a signal to folks that a property might be empty and raise the possibility of a break-in, so that's our concern there. And I know this was talked about last year or the year before at a city council meeting. Next is on page 11, states, "No special events, no special outdoor events, reunions, concerts, lawn parties, group events, weddings, and similar events or activities are prohibited on any STR property." As written, this prohibition would include almost any outdoor gathering. I don't even know what a lawn party is. Is that dinner? And also, the other concerning part is, as written, it stated, "This could be prohibited whether the property is being rented at that time or not." On page 12, the issue of the liability insurance, there's a minimum of $1 million. And we're wondering, what's the specific rationale for that number? That's not something that, you know, we have used. We talked with our insurance agent, and they said that would be, you know, fairly unusual. And last, on page 15, the proposal states that only one family at a time can be renting an STR. How do you define a family? Could this be adult siblings with their families? Do the adults need to be married to be a family? What do you consider a family? And how would this be regulated anyway? Will birth certificates be needed? Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Brown, council members, and other attendees. Thank you for giving me the moment to speak this evening. Kind of carrying on from her final comment, my concern also is with the single...
Excuse me, we need your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy Cruz. Sorry, jumped in there. Kathy Cruz, and I own property at 212 Superior and 420 Erie. And we use it both for personal use and rental as well. But yes, our concern also is with the single-family use-only language. The code, rightfully so, addresses safety concerns, limiting disruptive behavior that is detrimental to neighbors and the city, like I said, as it should. However, I don't see where a code should have any role in determining who is allowed to rent certain STRs throughout the city. I assume the language is there to try and prevent things like parties, excessive noise, but there's no way to predict who is going to be a quiet, respectful guest and who is not. It seems to me the code should attempt to prevent the disruptive behavior and address how it should be handled if that behavior happens, but not assume that certain groups of individuals, groups of friends, whatnot, are going to cause problems and restrict them before they even have an opportunity to rent the home. If people are willing to follow all the city rules, all the short-term rental rules, why should they not be able to have their choice of the STR that they want to rent in the town? It's the behavior that can be the issue, not the relationships of the people staying in the home. And there's zero guarantee that restricting that, restricting groups of friends, is going to prevent this disruptive behavior. To me, it just makes the code unwelcoming, discriminatory, and turns away great people who want to spend their hard-earned money in South Haven. And just as a story, earlier this year, I hosted a group of five former college roommates who were celebrating, most of them turning 65 this year, and they were great guests. They were respectful of my home, they were respectful of neighbors, community, and they fell in love with South Haven. And I feel like if this language passes and they contact me and say, "We'd love to come back and rent your home next year," I would have to tell them, "I'm sorry, I'm not allowed. You're not allowed to stay at my house, and you're not allowed to stay at any of the houses around me. You have to stay in these select few areas of homes throughout the city." And I just, that feels so wrong to me, and I don't understand what value that brings to the city, and it just, it makes no sense to me. I know that there is a chance that friend group could cause issues, same with a family group, but I think there are way more stories of these girlfriends that have been coming for years and all of that, that are great people that you want to welcome in your community. And I just don't feel like we should restrict their ability based upon the chance of other friend groups causing issues. So thank you. I hope that you will consider removing that language from the ordinance.
Thank you, Kathy.
I am Susan Peterson. I own a home 270 Park Avenue on the north side. And I agree with what she said about the verbiage and not being allowed to rent to, like girlfriends coming, because that usually ends up in a very good situation. Instead, maybe the verbiage could say, "If you, you know, carry on and, you know, that you will be subject to eviction for not obeying city rules," and make it more clear what the city rules are, because nobody wants a bad guest. I've told all my neighbors, you know, just text me if there's any problem. The other thing that I'm concerned about, I only, I live here full-time, bought my house in 1995. I've only rented now for four years. But what concerns me is leaving that tag out all year. I don't, I don't want that. I live alone. I think it's a safety thing, so during season, I think that needs to be up so people know. And, you know, for 10 months out of the year, I don't want it hanging up. The other concern I have, and I don't allow it, is people sleeping on the floor or on a couch. I think how many beds you have, and then maybe one. Like I have an area in my master, it's huge, it's above my whole garage, that they can do a blow-up bed and a kid, you know, a scrawny kid. But I don't think for fire reasons and safety reasons, you know, I'm allowed two people on the floor, on every floor. That's, I'm, I don't allow it, and I think that you should reconsider that, because that's like packing them in. Also, the party things, I think they're trying to avoid bachelorette parties or, you know, bachelor parties, that kind of raucous-type behavior. The other thing I would encourage you to do is to make some categories as far as business rental. I don't like it that that's what I am when I rent for six to eight weeks. I am a full-time resident. I rent my home for a short period of time to cover taxes, and I'm retired. It adds to my income, which is needed to stay here. And to term me as business, maybe you could, and also, I have friends that it's a second vacation home, and they're just trying to break even with the high taxes here. And they try and stay in it as much as possible and are here all throughout the year. So perhaps a business rental could be termed something that nobody lives in that's clearly a business. It's not like old school, what's been going on here since steamerships, when people live here and rent out their homes. Because I've been bullied a little bit, "Oh, what box did you check?" It's like, I know what box I checked. I checked the business rental because of the length of time that I rent, but it's really not for very long. So if we had different categories, like, okay, you're a full-time resident and you're doing this as a supplement, you have a vacation home here, you're paying really high taxes and trying to break even, and then you have a home that nobody ever lives in, well, that's a business. And then maybe that would separate things and make things more clear when you move down the path of whose certificate can still stay.
You have one minute left.
Okay. Like whose certificate can still stay? If you get to that point, then certainly a resident or a second home here paying all those taxes, that should stay.
Thank you, Susan.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Thatcher, and I am a member of the Steel headers and Operation Injured Soldier, along with four other major contributors to the salute to veterans, and I'm here asking you to approve the amendment for the change of date. It was a decision made on the best available information at the time, and we had to make it on Thursday in order to let the veterans who might be coming from Detroit, UP, Traverse City, let them know that, "Don't come." And Operation Injured Soldier pays their mileage to go from wherever they're at to here and back home, and for those that are staying here, we pay for their lodging. So there's some expense involved. I also consulted with the Coast Guard in Benton Harbor, and they concurred with four different charter boat captains that the original forecast was waves from two to four, and based on this new neat little app that shows wind and how it was expected on Thursday that Saturday, the wind would basically wrap around from the Mackinac Bridge over to Green Bay and then make a bullseye for us. And instead of being two to four, everybody was thinking it's going to be four. And so with that, we decided it was a prudent thing to cancel it, and the captain, you know, we're talking about people, in order to be a member of Operation Injured Soldier, you have to have a disability of more than 30%. So we're talking about people that, you know, third and not as agile on their fetus, a lot of people. So I'm asking you if we could try it again on the 31st.
Thank you, Mr. Thatcher.
Yes, ma'am.
Just thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the city council and the mayor. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Anne Helmer. I'm a resident of 567 Indiana. And aside from being the principal of a school for children with significant disabilities, I'm a proud South Haven homeowner and owner of what would be considered a short-term rental business with my best friend from high school here in South Haven. South Haven is a place where everyone, visitors and residents, come to enjoy beautiful beaches, vibrant downtown, and unique charm that makes life slow down just a little bit when you're here. Short-term rentals are a part of the community, and over the past several years, it has become a hot topic and sometimes a source of animosity for those of us that are trying to establish roots. I, myself, and my partner use it for personal use as well as short-term rental. There are many great points that previous speakers have meant about the specific proposed amendments to the short-term rental code. While I can personally attest to the effectiveness of the current regulations, I won't comment specifically on all of them, but the current rules have allowed responsible property owners like myself to contribute to the local economy and ensure the enjoyment of our guests and neighbors alike. Personally, I am surrounded by neighbors who are full-time residents that we have a relationship with. Many, like me, weren't born here but chose to relocate to South Haven because of its charm and tight-knit community that values just peace and character in our neighborhoods. And what I would ask the council to consider is, we already have very effective measures in place, and responsible homeowners like myself and my friend from high school/business partner, we respect it and we respond to our neighbors. We have a instant communication if there are issues, which we have not had many. And to speak on previous individuals that have come here, many of the people that rent from us are friends, longtime friends. They are groups of family, multi-generational families that come and look forward to enjoying time with their loved ones. Some that have come from across the country, states away, and choose South Haven because of its beauty, because of the welcoming nature of the town and the many events, which I personally love, Blueberry Festival and all of the events that bring people here. So I could go on to further discuss some of the troubling aspects of the new language, but a lot of the restrictions that are being opposed appear to be punitive, and I question the utility behind many of the additions, aside from eradicating short-term rentals. Specifically, as mentioned previously, the one-family-per-dwelling language. What is the definition of a family? And who can decide who one is allowed to spend their vacation with when they do have time and choose to enjoy that time in a vacation destination? Who am I or who are any of us to say who it's appropriate to spend time with and to rent a home with? So I urge the council to really carefully consider the rules that we have in place that I believe are working and are really heavily regulated by the city. A lot of people spend time, very, very kind individuals that come out and inspect our homes and work to ensure that we are following those regulations and there are firm processes in place in order to, to really make sure that this isn't something that's causing issues for people that do reside here full-time. So I would urge the city council to look at the regulations we already have in place and focus our energy there instead of some of the amendments that are proposed on the table. So again, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Rich Green. I'm here to represent 408 Eagle Street. As we know, this short-term rental thing is a hot topic in neighborhoods all across America. And we know it is here. I've had conversations with a couple of you personally. Well, one of the things in my fifteen years of being up here and watching South Haven and having family live here and run a business here, is not once have I heard any of the city council who was either pro or con short-term rentals reach out to the actual short-term rental companies and have them come and meet with you guys to develop amendments to ordinances to how to run this and how to regulate these together. It's one side does this, one side does that. The pros get in there, they make it very heavy-handed for themselves. The cons get here, and vice versa. Not too long ago, the city council paid a group to do this. This is the economic impacts of short-term rentals on South Haven. One of the very first things it states is that overall, most, most persons interviewed throughout the personal STRs found STRs acceptable. Now, we've sent this proposed ordinance to a law firm and just had them look it over. Now they say, at least in part, this seems to be a de facto zoning ordinance. It's regulating the use of land, and because it is a de facto zoning ordinance, it needs to be acted in pursuant of the Michigan Zoning Act, which is very important because citizens can reprimand the ordinance as they wish, as you know. Now, the ordinance is incredibly long. How is it going to be administered and enforced? Because right now, there are stuff on the books that you guys can enforce things. I know personally, through Shore's Vacation Rentals, we had clients in there who baited and switched and got in there and rented it for their children. And their children came up and they made a lot of noise. We tried to have them evicted and thrown out. The police department here said, "Not my problem. Call the zoning officer." The zoning officer said, "I don't have the authority." So who has the authority to regulate this stuff? Are we just going to make rules upon rules upon rules? When there are already rules to regulate bad behavior? We use a program called Safely that does pretty good background checks. I mean, Safely even looks at Interpol records for people coming up here to South Haven. So when we start regulating behavior, where's it stop? Snowbirds next, because they only are here fifty percent of the time? I would say, reach out to the short-term vacation management companies. Work with us. We'll work with you. We understand bad behavior is bad. We, but we also understand bad zoning is bad. When you allow homes that you say in your, in your previous zoning to have to have certain X amount of parking spaces made available, but then you let that home turn those parking spaces, their garage, into lounges and bars? And then you question the parking? That's kind of hard. The traffic? You say short-term traffic or short-term rentals are the traffic issue? Well, I lived in Bangor for several years. I sat on-
You have one minute.
Thank you. I sat on the Park and Recs Council, and we did a study. And we got numbers from MDOT, and they said about seven to ten thousand people run through Bangor, which we called Gateway to the Lake, because they were coming here to see you guys. That's seventy thousand people a day or a week coming here. It's not short-term rentals, who have had legislation where you say one car, two-car garages, they're there. Now, if any of you council members have not seen this, I brought twelve copies. You guys are more than welcome to review this. But this whole entire economic impact says it's all pro. They bring a lot of money to this city. And when you start regulating them, guess where they're going to go? Sagatuck. Guess who's going to get your tax money? Sagatuck. I would think twice about what you guys are putting forward. And again, reach out to management companies. We would love to sit down and find middle ground and figure out how to actually address these problems.
Thank you, Rich.
David Beenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. First of all, I'd like to say, full-time resident, by the way, like to say that I do have sympathy for full-time residents who are trying to raise a little extra money by renting out their homes. And I don't know if we can legally make a distinction, but I do have sympathy for people who are trying to do that. And, and I, as I've said for years, I'm not against short-term rentals. I am against the imbalance that I think that we have at this point. Back in, I think it was twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, I was part of a group of people who went around and got signatures to get a measure on the ballot to limit short-term rentals. Over a period of maybe a couple decades, through attrition, not to take anyone's registration away, don't want to do that to anyone, but over a period of maybe a couple of decades to reduce the number in about half, about down to two-hundred-and-fifty. Within eleven days, we got four-hundred-and-thirty signatures. Had we had more time, had we started earlier, I am confident that we would have gotten many more. But that just shows the depth of, of the voting residents in this community who have concerns. So through attrition, I believe that, that the number should be capped at two-hundred-and-fifty and that STR should not be transferable when the property is sold. And properties in residential districts should revert to residential when they're sold. All STRs should have the same rules, no more personal or business or exempt, no exemptions for condos, as these could be affordable housing for workers and families. Eliminate new STRs in residential neighborhoods, new STRs. Count bedrooms for occupancy, no extra per floor. That simply encourages cheating. Parking requirements should be the same as for residents. All STRs should have onsite parking for stated occupancy, no exceptions, no waivers. No grandfathering. All STRs should meet the code and zoning requirements unless they were properly grandfathered prior to January one, two thousand and nineteen. And I support anything that moves us in these directions. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
What a night. Regarding the Code of Ordinance Draft, I'm Elaine Herbert, 404 North Shore Drive. Staff notes include, quote, "The draft language reflects input from council members provided to staff and city attorney. Residents should certainly be included in these meetings." This new language is not preferred over the code we have now, which is not redlined here for comparison, but it's certainly not any improvement in any way. Residents would like to know which city council members provided the input regarding reduced leased or zoning administer totally waived onsite parking for STRs. That's bizarre. Previous zoning refers to STR dwelling units, not property, and this is also concerning. Residents fully approve the purpose and intent of this new code, but the rest of this proposed new code reflects hugely reduced regulations for STRs and increased powers of zoning for completely waiving parking, the most common resident complaint and worst neighborhood nuisance. Residents cannot enjoy waived parking. Why should STRs? The longtime traditional definition of bedroom is here, but this definition contradicts the option of occupancy allowing two extra persons per floor. These extra persons are obviously housed in living areas, a clear violation. We propose ten maximum occupancy and in bedrooms only. Single-family is clearly not defined. Residential zones are limited by South Haven zoning to having only one principal dwelling unit. Any other structure is defined as an ADU and are prohibited to be dwelling units. All new code language permitting two dwelling units on a single residential property as an STR are contrary to zoning. Residents cannot do this. Why should STRs do this? All STRs should have onsite parking for all guests exactly like now. There can be no exception, no leased off-site, no off-site easements. ZBA ruled on this in December two thousand and twenty-two, forcing an STR property to build a driveway. Zoning administrators should not have the power to waive parking. Onsite parking for STRs should not be less than for regular residents or other commercial businesses. It's an insult to residents. Parking size should also be defined as it is for residents, clearly defined as nine by eighteen. The code should not legalize on hold. No registration should mean no renting, just like now. Staff is trying to legitimize their late work and late applications. Charge STRs what needs to be charged to get registrations out on time. Cost of appeal should be low with no escrow. If staff is challenged, the city bears the burden of defense. As for enforcements, it's never happened in eight years, so how are we going to make it stick now? For both the code and the ordinance, residents require that all STRs have the same rules, no more personal or exempt. A business is a business, no grandfathering, no vested land rights. No continuing STRs in residential neighborhoods with an overlay allowed for Monroe Park, PUDs, and multiple-family zones. Attrition equals the existing owner's registrations are annual and renewable, but not transferable when the property is sold. Neighborhoods need neighbors and communities need neighborhoods. The cap needs to be two-fifty. STR rental terms need to be six to twenty-eight days in residential zones, R1 and R2. No exemptions for condos. These apartments are housing for workers and families. Bedrooms, maximum ten occupancy count, no extra per floor. The definition of bedrooms clearly prohibits the extra per floor. Parking should remain the same requirement as residents are required for homes. All STRs must have onsite parking for occupancy, no exception, no waivers.
You have one minute.
No new grandfathering of any kind. All STRs must meet new code and zoning requirements unless properly and provably established and grandfathered prior to January one, two thousand and nineteen. Residents worked long and hard for real STR reform, and this total step backward legalizes all reported staff malfeasance of the last eight years. City manager's annual review should reflect this abject failure. Thank you.
Good evening. Emily Westling, seven-six-five St. Joseph Street. Almost one year ago, I moved from over seventeen hundred miles away to become a full-time resident of South Haven. A question I often get is, "What brought you here?" Well, for many years, I experienced this town as a visitor. I was a tourist who came back summer after summer with my family. Now I'm a property manager, and I love my job because it allows me to share the place I love with other families. I'm confused when I hear visitors described as a nuisance because the vast majority of our guests are multi-generational families. My number-one customer is grandmas. Last week, I stopped in at a house to check out a maintenance issue, and when I walked in the door, I was greeted by an older couple and their grandchildren. The kids were all wearing matching T-shirts that said Cousin Crew. One little boy came up and gave me a hug and asked me to play, not realizing I was there to work. For me and for them, South Haven is not just a vacation spot. It's the backdrop of so many cherished family memories. Since moving here, I've observed a growing divide in the community, a divide that seems to be deepening with the extension of the moratorium and now the discussion of this proposed short-term rental ordinance revision. I want to make it clear that I believe everyone in this room, including the council, has good intentions. You want to protect what makes South Haven special. But I worry that in doing so, you might be losing sight of the broader picture. When I decided to move to South Haven last year, it was because this town offered two things that are increasingly hard to find: opportunity and affordability. Opportunity made available by the tourist industry and housing costs, which, when compared to the rest of the country, are attainable. If you've lived here a long time, it's easy to look at the rising housing costs and blame it on STRs. But the truth is, affordable housing is a nationwide issue, not unique to South Haven and not even unique to tourist towns. In my view, STRs have become a convenient scapegoat for a complex issue. And I wish that the council would devote its time to focusing on issues with broader impact on the larger community, improving schools, attracting new employers, and beach safety, to name a few. The proposed ordinance, as it stands, feels like an overreach. It threatens to stifle the very opportunities that brought me here. It threatens to stifle the very opportunities that brought me here and that sustain so many others. Our very small company pays over $7,000 a week in wages, and we partner with so many local businesses who rely on this industry to stay afloat. Can you look each one of us in the eye and tell us there will be other jobs and opportunities for us here in South Haven without a thriving tourist industry? The language proposed in this revision concerns me. Specifically, the ordinance is retroactive application of new rules to grandfathered properties, the strict three violations rule without clear definitions, the uncertainty around permit transfers, and the proposal requiring guests to be from the same family, all raise significant concerns. These provisions could unfairly impact homeowners and go against the inclusive welcoming spirit that defines South Haven. Like it or not, tourism is the cornerstone of South Haven's economy. If we move forward without this ordinance as it's written, we risk dismantling the very thing that makes our town vibrant and thriving with no other industry available to take its place. I'm 31 years old, in the prime of my working career, and I sacrificed a lot to make this move to South Haven. You don't often hear from people like me because we are busy working and taking care of our families, but trust me when I say we're paying attention.
You have one minute.
And this is not what we want for our town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Emily.
Dan Agno, 964 Everett Parkway. I'm glad Bruce was here to talk about the veterans' fishing trip. My boat was ready, my first mate was ready, but the weather wasn't ready, so we're going to do it again on the 31st. If people can come out and cheer for all the veterans, if they don't catch any fish, they don't care, but they have such a great time. And seeing all those people with flags and a flag over the river and the Coast Guard fireboat, it's just unbelievable. So if anybody can make it, it'll be two weeks, a week from Saturday, the 31st. I'm also going to talk about short-term rentals. This gentleman talked a little while ago about meet with the agents. The council has never went with the residents. I've been asking this since I blew in the face. I've had marked-up ordinances and everything. We can sit together with them, we can sit together with the agents, but it's never happened. So why should they sit with agents if they won't sit with the residents? And again, I will repeat what someone else has said. I'd like to know where some of this wording has come from because I don't know who's making these changes. Like, the biggest problem here was the parking thing. It says, oh, you have to meet all the requirements of the zoning for parking, but if you don't, here's, it's called impossibility. Section 6 paragraph is called impossibility. Well, that means you don't have any parking, it's impossible, so you should not be getting a SDR registration. Like I indicated in my email, there were two residences, one on South Haven Street and one on Park, that did not have onsite parking. And the zoning board ruled that they have to have parking because that's what's in the ordinance. And you also talked about the fact if you have three or whatever number of SDRs on your property, that you have to have a registration, but the ordinance, zoning ordinances don't allow three dwellings on a property. So right there, you're contradicting what the zoning says, okay? And nobody is against SDRs. The fact is, they bring a lot of them into the town, they do all the towns up and down the Gold Coast, there's no question about that. We're not saying eliminate them, we're saying reduce them. The southern part of South Haven, from here down the next six or seven blocks, the ratio is like two to one. Go down any street, go down Erie, go down Superior, all you'll see is rentals, cars, cars, and more cars. And we're trying to exacerbate the parking thing by saying, hey, if you don't have any parking, oh, well, you know, park on the street. So we need to reduce the number of SDRs. We've been talking about this for eight years, it took the city eight years to do this. The way it is now, it's going to take, it's better not take eight years to do it, it's better take it four years and we still haven't had the action, that's why we've had two moratoriums. There's got to be some significant change. We're not going to say do like-like township, get rid of them all, but we need some significant changes. St. Joe just limited theirs. You can only have SDRs near Silver Beach and in certain areas near downtown, okay? And New Buffalo has very strict requirements, and these are all Gold Coast towns. We don't want to get to that point, but we're going to have to. If this council and members of the staff cannot make these changes, then the residents are going to have to do something. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
The STR draft language reflects input from council members provided to city staff and the city attorney. We do not appreciate the lack of resident input and want to know which council members recommended the language used. This is what residents require. All SDRs have the same rules, no more personal or business or exempt. After gradual attrition, no more SDRs in residential neighborhoods. There should be an overlay allowed for Monroe Park and PUDs. Attrition, the existing owner's registrations are annual and allowed to re-register, but not transferable when the property is sold. All residential properties should revert to residential when sold. Cap, SDRs at 250. All residential STR rental terms should be six days to 28 days, six days minimum, 28 days maximum. No exemptions for condos, this never made sense in the first place. Condos are perfect to use as affordable housing for workers and families. Bedrooms only for occupancy should count, no extras per floor. The definition of bedrooms clearly prohibits the extra per floor. No new grandfathering of any kind. All SDRs must meet new code and zoning requirements unless properly established and grandfathered prior to January 1 of 2019. STR onsite parking must be compliant, very much like what is written in the current STR ordinance. Many responsible STR owners have gone to great lengths and expense to responsibly comply in every way. I support that. The city is disrespecting these responsible STR owners by bending the rules to accommodate the outliers who want to rent on their terms and without restrictions. It's extremely unacceptable for the city to accommodate non-compliant owners who take advantage and completely disrespect the compliant owners. Why can't city staff see this? Street parking around town is already out of control. My own identified sample is Ward 1, the southwest downtown sector on the short-term rental snapshot report. Remember, this area has a ratio of one STR to two residences, not the sanctioned one STR to four residents that is supposed to be the way it is here in South Haven. Parking in this neighborhood area is dangerous. Trying to turn onto streets with cars parked up to the corner on both sides is almost impossible and treacherous. Erie Street to and from the breach, the beach, is a literal joke with parking on both sides, and this is the access to the beach that is used in emergencies. Again, where are our priorities here? It's clear tourism is number one, the number one industry here at South Haven, and not like, and not that we like that, but let's not have it be at the expense of the residents. Let's make and treat residents like we're number one here at South Haven and figure out how to make tourism work for all of us. And I also support a continuing evaluation of the city manager in light of the way that this revised STR ordinance was done. Thank you.
I'm Misha Newman, 40-year full-time resident of this town. Can you hear me now? Should I start again? Okay, I'm Misha Newman, 270 Itzen Court, and I am a full-time resident for 40 years. You got it all?
I have to speak this way.
Okay.
Stand forward.
Of course, I'm here for the short-term rental. First and foremost of all, I agree with everybody that just came before me, especially that lady.
Ms. Newman, you need to focus.
Oh, I mean, especially that lady and...
Yes, ma'am. Don't look back, just keep looking up here.
Okay. I agree with everything that was said, and I can reiterate it, but I want to save myself the time, what that, just the last lady and also Elaine Herbert said, and some other ones. I have nothing against short-term rentals. It's a matter of fact, after a $30,000 damage from a permanent residence, not me, but my family decided, we're going to turn one of the apartments into a short-term rental. We had an extensive renovation done and then applied for a permit. That permit, somebody came out and checked everything out. So we started renting out. One of my daughters is in the hospitality and tourism business. She was the one that actually suggested it. So we basically went into it. Our apartment comfortably sleeps six people, it's a very large apartment. And we have, on average, during this season, two to four people that stay three to four days. All these guests are vetted very thoroughly, and we had not one, not one problem. Why we had the inspector there to obtain our first permit, it was, he was keen on the parking. Thanks God, we have a very large driveway where you can put six cars in it and a double garage. So that was never been an issue. But I understand also that we live on a busy street, and we also went around the neighbors, our immediate neighbors, and asked if they will be okay with it. So we did our due diligence. I'm at this discrepancy, tobawuhu, regarding short-term rentals since the beginning. Started with a lawsuit that nobody is allowed to talk about it, and then it just evolved into other issues. We have too many short-term rentals in this town, and even if people are not against short-term rentals, they want this reduced. And whatever has been said on this revisement, most people don't even understand. They have to go to somebody else in order to have that interpret what was now been agreed upon, and that's not cool at all. So...
You have one minute.
Thank you. I would appreciate if we could come together, especially with permanent residents, voting residents, and sit down and hash out what has to be done and what can be done. Because the people that are real estate agents, that are people that have a vetted interest in the tourism and things, they can't, they could not be part of it because it's self-interest, plain and simple. So we're going from a small, short-term rental person like us, my family, to somebody that rents out thousands and thousands of dollars for 18 people a week. So there's no profit in it. And I would very much appreciate it if some minds can come together and have a little chutzpah and get this done and over with.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ron Wall. I live at 600 Virginia, right there on the river. I've only been here twice before. It's for my girl, little girls have Girl Scouts, we did flags, and I thought I'd be the only one here because that's how it usually is. But I should have been more prepared. I just started getting on this thing about a week ago because everybody's saying, the residents of this town, the residents of this town. I'm a resident of this town. I was born here in the 60s. My great-grandparents were here, my great-great-grandparents are here. What I don't understand is since they were here is in 1890, you could rent out any one of these houses. Every single one of these houses could have been rented or probably has been rented. Why do we even have the short-term rental stuff? Why are we treating them different? What's different if somebody right here, you may, I don't know, if you wanted to rent your house 10 times by the week, what difference does that if you rent it 12 times by the month? Don't make any difference. Everybody should just be nice. I mean, I don't even know, I wish I would have got involved in this a lot earlier because there shouldn't even be short-term rentals. Back up. Like I said, I'm not quite prepared like I should be. There should not be short-term rental forms. You should be able to do what you want with your house. You bought your house. I don't need to peek in your windows to see if you have your grandkids there. I don't need to peek in your windows if you live someplace else and you decide to let your coworkers stay in your house. You bought the house, let's be smarter on here. 10 o'clock, you got to be quiet. I mean, what does it matter? I've lived here for 50-some years. I'm quiet sometimes, not all the time, but usually. This is a great town, and all I hear is parking. Well, if every house is supposed to have the registered parking, why are they worried about where other people are parking? If they, every house, I didn't even know this. Like I said, I've had, I have a house here, I luckily have a lot of parking because I didn't even know you had to have a certain amount of spaces. But if there's a spot, you can have a whole fraternity house come in from Kalamazoo with 110 cars if they had them, and they can park wherever they want. Why does it matter if a family of grandparents and everybody else park up the street? You know, it's just common courtesy. I live on the river, everybody comes by. You want to know what they all do? They all wave. I got two little girls, second grade and fifth grade, they're going in this year. They all waved to them, my girls waved to them. Why is this town getting, but I think it's very few people in this town that is so, I don't even know what words I want to use, but be nice. It doesn't matter. There shouldn't even be, this, this short-term thing is crazy. If you want to rent your house by the month, do it. If you want to rent your house one day, do it. If you want to rent it to your grandparents, do it. But everything I see in this place, people from Switzerland, all around the country, all around the world, they all come here. It is awesome. We only had to put up for it for four months. I mean, that's it, four months, and that's why we live here. And I don't know about all you guys, but I go on vacations, which makes me a tourist. I don't want people hating on me. It's like, come on, we're all Americans, be nice. We do need a code of conduct. If somebody is loud at 10:30 at night, you know, I don't want my kids being awake, but it hardly ever happens. I live right next to a marina. It's all short-term people. I mean, they come on their boat for the weekend from Chicago, from Indiana, most of them are a little bit more around here, but still, you know, they'll be quiet. I don't need any more time, just, let's just be nice. But I think we should get rid of them. That way, we don't have to worry about the 18-by-9 parking spot, who cares? You know, I park in my driveway, you guys do. If I can't, I park on the road. My guys, sometimes they park in my driveway, some days they park on the road. But this is a great town, and we're just coming to just getting nitty-gritty, we need this. And do you guys know there's 8,363 addresses in 4909 home? Where do they come up with 250? 250? Come on. Why that number? Why not 240? Why not 1,100? It doesn't matter. If the people are nice and they're in your house, the more the merrier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Lamb, 740 North Shore Drive. I am a full-time resident here in South Haven. In 2021, South Haven was named TripAdvisor Traveler's Choice Award. It's a very commendable and prestigious right. It's a very commendable and prestigious right. Tourism is our strongest industry, no question. Speaking to the new proposed STR changes, what effect could this have? But first, let me speak to the current landscape of South Haven. It's a fact. There is more division, hatred, evil actions happening more than I've ever seen in this town. From my modest Midwest upbringing, a neighbor would bring back a trash can if I was out of town or missed a deadline. It's simply the right thing to do. And, and, and folks have taken my trash out deliberately during violation times to give me a citation. It's not funny. These are unacceptable actions. As a stark comparison, I have two properties in Casco Township, a half a block away from the city limits. They are wonderful. If they see something, they say something to me or my rental company, as it should be. They are looking out for everyone's best interest. So, as folks continue to destroy the STR community, this could be the effects. Shiva Group, the Rental Alliance Group, we volunteer our time for blessings in a backpack to support underprivileged children in our area, which we volunteer and we want to support. But this could diminish or go away totally. There'll be no more cleaning up of playgrounds or beaches to beautify South Haven. There'll be no more $5,000 scholarships to graduating seniors. Algae along the shoreline, like you had last week, won't be removed because you have diminished tax dollars as the short-term rental people leave and go to Sagatuck. Those beautiful South Haven billboards you see on I-95s as you drive to South Haven from Chicago? What are we going to do? Put an overlay on it and say, only one family? Bring your certificates? What country do we live in? Implementing enforcement of guests to leave an STR by 11 o'clock at night? If a guest is drunk, am I forced to put them in a car to leave? How can you folks sleep at night implementing such a ruling? Where is common sense here? We, meaning all of us, want a city council that wants to elevate this wonderful city. We want a city council that will drive economic development and work as a strong cohesive team with the STR community and I'm hearing tonight with the residents. There is a simple solution on how to achieve that. Together, we, we all improve its infrastructure, public safety and parks. We enhance education. As one team, we attract new businesses and jobs that develop a workforce and work collectively to make that happen.
You have one minute.
Together, we foster local businesses, partnerships and provide community resources. Your current moratorium has put hard-working people on the brink of bankruptcy. These folks have supported South Haven for 10 to 20 years and are hurting financially. You can't come in and change the rules of the game anytime you feel. The current rental ordinance should run its course and proceed with the lottery. In closing, I'm requesting immediately you lift the moratorium. The rental community is ready and willing to support a council for strong and smart economic development. If not, maybe this council should consider resigning from your position for the good of the community. This town is badly fractured and broken. Stop the division in this town. Stop destroying many innocent, hard-working people trying to make a future here. Stop driving our tourists away.
Your time is up.
Make the council great, the city great again.
Thank you, Linda.
Hi, my name is Molly Chapores and I am not a resident of South Haven. However, I live just up M-43 in Madawan. And my husband and I and our two young sons, we own 668 Maple and 405 Eagle Street. As a child, I grew up coming to South Haven, you know, when school got out and on the weekends and senior skip day and all of the things in between. And my parents had no idea I was here. And it's become a place that I love, even though I am not a resident. My husband and I got married. He's from upstate New York. And when he came to South Haven for the first time, he fell in love and he had never experienced a town like this. So, in 2020, we purchased our home on Maple Street. We have amazing neighbors. We also have amazing renters. We have renters who come back year after year, who are multi-generational families, who are girlfriends getting together, and we have yet to have any issues with them. And as a realtor, we have, my husband and I have put together strict rules, knowing that we manage it and it's our family and our reputation on the line. And so, we purchased 405 Eagle Street, which is downtown. And we are next to the backside of Taste. And this property for us has been a struggle, but yet we love it. Our two young children call it the hotel house. And which is funny because it kind of feels like that. But we still have renters that come back every year to this particular unit. We work closely with Taste to make sure that our renters are not disturbing their back door and that we're not bothering the Polish pottery store. And our biggest concern is what happens to a unit like this. It can't be sold as housing for someone who works downtown. The value of this home is too high. It's not affordable housing. And it also still does not solve it not having a permit because it doesn't have parking. It wouldn't have parking for a resident either. And most of the units that are downtown, Phoenix and Eagle, don't have parking. And if they did, it would be taking away from parking, from people going out to dinner, shopping, ice cream, or we would have less commercial use in that particular area. One of the stories I wanted to share with you just super quick is about my seven-year-old son. He's thinking about things that are just not for seven-year-olds. He listens to his dad and I worry about what the future of our rental business is. And he said to me the other night, Mom, what happens when you and dad die? And I said, well, honey, the concept of inheritance and a will, things you don't understand. And he's like, but what happens to my favorite place? The place where I go and play at the park? The place where I go and swim at the beach? The place where we bring our friends out? And what happens to that and the business that you and dad have built? And I told him, I said, that's an unknown future, but I hope that someday that's still there for them. And it's just sad to me to think that my seven-year-old's been listening close enough that he would ask those kind of questions when he should not have a worry in the world about his mom and dad's business. And he should just be worrying about soccer and football and his ridiculous little mullet that he wants highlighted blue. So, thank you for your time and I hope you guys have a great evening.
Thank you.
My name's Kevin Hunt. I, uh, thank you for letting me be here. Thanks for letting me be here. Thank you. I, I'm here to represent myself and my family. I just wanted to share my perspective. I am, I consider myself, you know, a part of this community. I have been for, my family has just celebrated our first year anniversary. We bought our house about a year ago. We're not fortunate enough to live here year-round, but we spent 13 weeks in the last year up here throughout the winter. About every fourth week, we come up from Indianapolis. And this has been a dream of ours to own a home along the coast. We looked all along the coast and the first day we came to South Haven is the day we bought our house. We fell in love with the city. And like the previous gentleman, I think this town is awesome. We had no aspirations to rent our house initially. This was going to be our home to vacation in. And, you know, quickly realizing that the property taxes were going to be something that we probably couldn't afford. We looked into short-term rental and we're fortunate enough to have the lease or the license extended to us. We don't profit from our home. We do it so that we can be members of this community. I'm not here, I don't know all the agenda. I don't know all the specifics. I know that my short-term license is under threat and that threatens my family's ability to live in this town and be community members. We, my son played in the snow at the park across from our house for the first time in South Haven. I learned to paddleboard. I know there's discounts in the winter at Soha Surf Shop and at Outpost Sports. And I put off my Amazon spending, so I come up here and spend and take advantage of the sales. I consider myself a member of this community. And I'm able to do that because of my short-term rentals that I can do when I'm not here. I don't want to do that. I don't want to share my house, but it's been a good experience so far. And I would like to be able to continue that. I have one neighbor to my right that I just met recently because we shared a plumbing problem. He rents his house out as an investment. It's been a good experience. I've met people that live there. Everyone's friendly, smiling. And next to me is another gentleman. He's owned his house for 40 years. We just met him. It took like eight months to meet him. It's mostly a empty house year-round. He's fortunate enough to have that house and I guess, you know, property taxes aren't as big a deal for him. Both neighbors are great. I kind of consider myself somewhere in the middle. But yeah, I just, I, I wanted to share my perspective. Thank you very much. I like being a member of the community. And I, I, you know, however, short-term rental licenses are affected, it affects more than profit, business. It affects my ability to live here. And thank you for taking that into consideration.
Thank you.
Pat Gaston, 97 Superior Street. I guess, I mean, I have to admit, I haven't read the whole pack tonight. But I was only under, I, that, that we were slowly through attrition, going to try and take it down to 250. I didn't know of anybody that was going to yank anybody. It's like, there's too much protesting here. Nobody's going to take your certificate away. You know, it was just through attrition, bringing this down to 250. The all, the other little rules and regulations that are in there, I really don't know about. But I think bringing it down so there would be no new, new certificates, whatever there is now, whatever they are now, they're capped at that. And slowly but surely, they will come down to 250. I don't think that's outrageous. I know sometimes I've had people next to me who rent and, and they've said to me, does it bother you? And I have to admit that actually, most people that rent next to me, they're fine. But I've said to them, would you like this? Would you like people coming in and out of the house next door to you every three, five, six, seven days? Would you want that? And I've never, ever had one go, yeah, I would love that. I'm just saying, that's not what most people would choose. That's not what most people would choose, to have people they don't know. And they're nice people. I'm not saying they're not nice people. But strangers coming in and out of the house next door to you every few days? It's just disquieting. And again, I, there's just, I don't know, everybody's complaining. Nobody's, I don't think anything in here says we're going to take your certificate away. We're just going to say slowly through attrition, we're going to bring it down. I don't know why that's so bad.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm George E. Bright. I live at 214 Superior Street and I thank you for the opportunity to share my perspective. I've heard a lot of people talk about the taxes. Why are they so high? I understand why they're high. We have to take care of our city. It takes a lot of money to take care of the city, to make our beaches clean, inviting. I think maybe lifeguards are a good way to go. I'm not sure. I'm sure Councilman, you can help me more on the history of lifeguards. I lived for 20 years down Palisades Park. We never had anyone drown. Why? Everybody looked out for everybody else.
This, this time is to talk about items on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I talk about the parking issue?
Yes. Is it about short-term rentals?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, the short-term rentals across the street from me, I understand why. I like a pickup truck. There'll be seven bedrooms, there'll be seven pickup trucks. And yes, we have city parking lots. Some of the pickup trucks could go there and people could maybe drive together. I think that'd be a good idea. Maintenance year-round. Yeah, I know when tourist season is. I know when it begins. I know when it ends. In between, we get snow. We get a lot of snow. We get a lot of ice. I worry about walking on the sidewalks in the snow and the ice because I know even when we have the city plow go around for the sidewalks, we could get another snowfall and get a lot of ice within a half an hour or an hour. Are the people there who own the short-term rental next to me? Across the street? Across the street? Beyond me? Down on Maple Street? Are they there? No. I don't know why people are worried about having a short-term sign in their window year-round. Right now, the buildings are empty. And it's easy for anybody to see if they want to vandalize. I hope they don't vandalize my house. But the house next door, across the street, they're empty. There are no lights on. So, it's not just a tourist season issue. It's not just an issue of, oh, I need the extra money. The other problem is what's happened to real estate prices? The house next to me, bought for $500,000 in three years, sold for $750,000. 50% profit of a quarter million dollars. That's carpet bagging. That's obscene profiteering. Wow, so good. The house across the street said, well, let's raise our price to a million dollars. Wow. And then the house down on Maple said, wow, that's so good. $1.6 million. Oh, that's, that's great. Meanwhile, my son, who lived, rented in South Haven, had to move to North Carolina to find a house he could afford, even though he worked down at Whirlpool. So, let's reduce by attrition the number of SDRs to 250. It's not unreasonable. Nobody's STR permit's going to be yanked from them. But make sure the sidewalks are plowed. I just got a puppy.
You have one minute.
I'll make it. I just got a puppy, 10 weeks old. We're already going around meeting renters, homeowners. And boy, are they attracted to my puppy. Come our snows and ice, I want to be there. I don't want to have to sue the owner of an STR for not shoveling his sidewalk or her sidewalk or getting out with sand and salt when there's ice in February and March. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Thank you, George. Are there any other comments?
Good evening, Council. I'm Walt Placati, 559 Monroe Boulevard. And I just want to go on record saying that Neighborhoods Need Neighbors supports every word that Elaine Herbert and Lisa and all the others said tonight. This issue is about money, and it always has been about money. Kate, about how many short-term rentals do we have, including PUDs and personals? Over 900?
This is not a time for discussion.
She won't answer that. But we have just under 1,000. Okay, every town up and down this coast, within their city limits, has between 25 and 250. We have 1,000, almost 1,000. And that's okay with you? Why aren't more towns clamoring for more short-term rentals if they're that good? They're not. Everyone is having an issue with short-term rentals. And what you're offering up here tonight is just a big nothing burger. You're not doing anything. 250 slash two. That's what the residents want. No more than 250 and no more than two per block. And if you, as our elected officials, haven't heard that numerous times from the survey that we did that you didn't pay any attention to, from the initiative that we did that you didn't pay any attention to, when are you going to actually start listening to the residents, the people who elected you? What you're, what you're trying to feed us, that's not what we want. And we're not going to buy it. And we're not going to settle for it. I'm not going away. And the voting residents of this city are not going away. And if you don't want to listen to the voting residents, because obviously you created this without talking to anybody, if you're not going to listen to the voting residents, put it on the ballot. Let us decide what we want our neighborhoods to look like. People that do not live here don't get to dictate what we want our neighborhoods to be like. Out of those 1,000 short-term rentals, only 70 some are owned by people in South Haven. The rest of them are owned by outsiders. Where do you think that money goes? It sure doesn't stay here. That report, don't even get me started. Look at one of the academic reports. Look at the Upjohn Report. This is a dying city. By every economic indicator, this is a dying city. And you guys are letting it happen. So just keep doing what you're doing, which is nothing, a big nothing. Sorry, but that's how I feel. And that's how the majority of residents in this town feel.
Any other comments? Okay, we're moving on to new business.
Consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Item eight.
Consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through F?
Madam Mayor, I would like to remove 8A-E, excuse me, from the consent agenda.
We'll move that to 12A. Is there a?
So I would move to approve consent agenda items A through D and F.
Second.
Through F.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. The City Council will be asked to set public hearings for each of the following items to occur at the regular City Council meeting, to be held on September 16th at 7:00 PM at South Haven City Hall. A, new brownfield plan for 900 Indiana, new Everett Park Phase 2. And B, amendment to brownfield plan for 1070 Indiana, new Everett Park Phase 1. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. The developer for these two parcels has already gone to the brownfield authority to request these two, one, a new brownfield plan for 900 Indiana and then amendment to 1070 Indiana. This would be coming to City Council in approximately about a month. And before action would be able to be taken, the 900 Indiana does have an existing brownfield plan from 2000, I think, four, that would have to be terminated. So we're asking the City Council to put these public hearings on the agenda for the September 16th meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion to set a public hearing?
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for both the brownfield plan for 900 Indiana and the amendment to brownfield plan for 1070 Indiana.
Oh, second it.
Any discussion?
Yes. In the material for this, and I do know that a lot of work went into it, and thank you. I like to thank staff. And I know the environmental consultant has been very busy. And I do appreciate the need to terminate and redo this because of the length, the allowable term for a brownfield plan. In this process, though, I would like to inquire about potential amendments. I do know when Trailside was, when there were amendments to the plan, when construction was happening in 2021, residents were trying to obtain the due care plan. And that was difficult. And I would like to incorporate into the proposal that the due care plan for the brownfields shall be made available for public access on the city's website. And that for the acknowledgements, because there is the discussion of housing and some of these being now townhomes and providing a more differential window of prices, because of them being exempt from the cap for short-term rentals, I would inquire about whether there is any other type of incentive that we might be able to provide to potential new buyers that would be year-round residents or somehow provide some economic way to encourage that these homes be bought by year-round residents versus short-term rentals. And towards that, come up with if we could find any other way to do that. Because there is acknowledgement about the benefits of the property, but the benefits are not fully recognized when all of the homes can be for short-term rental when we are at such a housing crisis. And also, I would like to ensure that other environmental records are made publicly available, like any updates to the baseline environmental assessment. Is that something that could be worked out between now and then? Or is this agreement set?
I'll have to check with the developer and see what has to be done. If there are substantial changes, this may have to go back to the brownfield authority. Because it sounds like we would be making more requirements than have already been discussed and approved by that board.
Well, some would potentially be, I would assume, fairly minor, making the due care plan publicly available, making their environmental plans publicly available.
Yeah, I shouldn't see a problem with that. But then again, I have to ask them for that, right? So we are not necessarily entitled to that. But that is something that they do have to provide as part of the eligible activities, is to create that plan, the due care activities.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I do think that incentivizing some potential long-term residents, I've seen other communities do that. So I feel like if there is a way to look into that, that could be beneficial for creating more housing here.
Any other comments? Okay. We're ready to vote. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? The motion passes and the public hearing is set for September 16th at 7:00 PM. Next, the City Council will be asked to consider approval of a date amendment to Special Event 2024-10, Salute to Veterans 2024. To occur on Saturday, August 31st, from noon to 1:00, with a boat parade at the Black River Channel from the lighthouse to Dyckman Bridge.
I would move to approve a date amendment to the Special Event 24-10, Salute to Veterans 2024, to occur Saturday, August 31st, from noon to 1:00 PM with a boat parade in the Black River Channel from the lighthouse to the Dyckman Bridge.
Support.
Any discussion?
Fingers crossed the weather holds.
Yeah.
Ditto.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? The motion passes and I'd like to take a brief recess now. Is there a motion to take a five-minute recess?
I move to make a, to take a five-minute recess.
Support.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? We'll be back. We are back in session. We are at number 11. City Council will be asked to review proposed language amending sections of the Code of Ordinances regulating short-term rentals and provide feedback to staff. Let's begin, if Council has questions for our staff. Joe? Joe?
Sure, I'll start at the second page.
Go ahead.
Second page says bedrooms. They define a bedroom. I called and checked with other towns. And some towns nearby say a bedroom has to have the door, excuse me, has to have two egress points, a door and a window. And some require a closet. So my question is, with the way we have it written, can someone just take a den, put a bed in it, and call it a bedroom?
Kelly?
What are the requirements for a bedroom?
Well, our definition of bedroom does not require a closet. So I suppose if someone had a den that met the definition of bedroom, they could turn the den into a bedroom. Yes, it would have to be separated from the rest of the house by a door. And when our STR inspectors are visiting the homes, they do look for two forms of egress in each bedroom. So it would have to have those egress points.
So they look for two egresses?
They do.
So they have to have, then the room has to have a window and a door? Or two doors?
Or two doors.
Anything else, Joe?
That's it on that page. You can go to someone else.
George, do you have any questions?
Yep. So this is a, this is a general question.
Yep, so this is a, uh, this is a general question and I guess it comes up first on page five or page eighty-six of the packet. But I see throughout the term dwelling and dwelling unit and I don't think we're very consistent here. And if you look at page five, uh, number B one D, says the number of bedrooms in the S T R dwelling. And it seems like, and this is, this is again talking about the application or the registration form. I think that should be dwelling unit. Most, most times it seems like it should be dwelling unit. In some cases, they've just have the term dwelling. And I can give you the, my sheets with all the ones highlighted where I think there should be dwelling unit versus dwelling. On that same page, I, I think that city staff should provide the attorney with items on this registration form that are not needed. And I think we should strike those, like I think the number of bedrooms, I don't think we need that because we calculate the number of bedrooms based on our inspection. The, the anticipated maximum number of occupants, we calculate that. I don't think they need to put that on the registration form. That's just one example, but I'd like to see staff work with the attorney and, and trim this up a little bit. Uh, on the, oh, also on that same page where, um, let's see. There's a talk in here about parking in number, uh, or letter E echo. It says the number of off street parking, but then later on it goes on to have a, the next page, it talks about a parking plan. I don't think we need E because everything in there is covered in the next page where it talks about the parking plan.
Oh, before you turn the page, on D, the number of bedrooms in the S T R dwelling, did you want that to be changed to dwelling unit wherever it's mentioned?
Yes, there's several examples where there's dwelling instead of dwelling unit. And I think I just want him to go through every, everything where he's got dwelling and see if that's really what he means, because I think in some cases it's supposed to be dwelling unit instead of dwelling.
Okay.
Yeah, and George, I did do that and provided those comments to him and I unfortunately didn't get it to him until the twelfth. Maybe he didn't have a chance. I can share with you what I sent.
Go ahead, George.
The next comment I have, other than the dwelling, dwelling units, this is on page ten where it talks about maximum occupancy and I, we had some of these comments tonight. I agree with them. The occupancy should be by bedroom. I don't know why we have the two additional occupants per finished story. But we should give that feed, that's feedback I have and I agree with it. Some of that feedback we got tonight.
So remove the part that says two occupants per bedroom or remove the part plus two additional occupants per finished story?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, one of the comments we got again tonight, I agree with, uh, is on page eleven, about no special events, that terminology seems to be too general for, for what we, I think are trying to accomplish with that. The next comment I have is on page twelve. And again, this is on N on that page. It talks about parking. And the table on page thirteen says what the parking requirements are based on occupancy. So this, having this additional statement that talks about every S T R property shall have parking for every S T R renter and occupant and guest seems confusing and conflicting with the table that's on the, on the next page. And then multiple people have commented on, and I agree with, a single family use only. We should get rid of that whole section. I don't think we need that. That's on page fifteen.
Oh, the part that says only one single family at a time may rent.
Yeah.
I agree. And we received a lot of emails regarding that, too.
So the, uh, on that same page, under prohibitions, it talks about any lot or parcel with two or more dwellings thereon except for blank. And if you have a parcel with an attached condominium or a duplex on it, you're going to have more than one dwelling on that lot or parcel. That is not an issue, so I don't think we need that statement there.
We don't need number six.
Correct.
Okay.
And that kind of gets into one of the comments we heard is that this, this regulatory ordinance touches a lot on zoning issues and we need to be careful that we're not trying to recreate or conflict with the zoning ordinance with this regulatory ordinance.
Right.
And that's it?
Yep. Oh, okay. Mary?
Yeah, I, so, and I apologize for interrupting, um, George, but I had provided that and, and in fact, I think I, I went a little further. And, you know, sometimes S T R is used, sometimes it's S T R property, sometimes it's S T R dwelling. And I think the different terms cause confusion and I suggested some unification and actually some additional definitions that I can share and could be incorporated to save time to avoid confusion of dwelling dwelling unit property. Because a, an S T R property, as George just identified, in some circumstances has more than one S T R dwelling and the parking is based on the dwelling unit, not the property. Um, I think it avoids confusion. And for the, um, let me go, so for page fifteen, the, the number six, I actually interpret that differently because we do know of situations where S T Rs, more than one building is on an, on a property that is being treated as an S T R. And so I think we need clarification on which properties those are for clarity of what is an S T R dwelling unit and if, et cetera. So I would request guidance from legal counsel on removing that because I believe the purpose is when we have more than one dwelling unit on it, that is not an attached condo type thing.
Kelly, what's your opinion on that, on number six?
This is the impossibility section, am I correct? Am I in the right spot?
No, um, page fifteen, prohibitions, number six, so it's Q six, right above property owner responsibilities.
Oh, okay, sorry, I, I was a little, I was not following.
I started with the end of his list, sorry.
Um, okay. Any parcel to? We, we do have a couple of cases where there are lawfully nonconforming, um, units. There are more than one dwelling, there is more than one dwelling unit on a parcel that is registered as an S T R. I don't know how many that there are. So I think that we might need to do a little more research on that item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh, for clarification for family, so in the recodification, uh, family has a revised, much broader definition. And I won't go through the whole thing, but it's one or more persons occupying a single, single dwelling unit all related by blood, legal adoption or marriage, and not more than three other persons. So it's not, it's not a, a singular family. It is broader, I think, than many people thought. So I want to put that out there to better appreciate that, although I do recognize some of the comments from gathering of friends. I, and I'll just leave it at that, that I think is something that requires further discussion. I, my biggest concern was with the parking, um, issue that was the N six one. And, um, you know, it was indicated that these, this was based on comments from council, I'm sorry, from city council to city staff and legal counsel. And I had asked Kate earlier when I was speaking with her who had requested that because I know I had submitted requests that at least for R one A and R one B that, um, parking be strictly enforced because I know those are the areas most impacted. Kate, did you identify anyone specific or was that added by legal counsel?
I'm not aware, excuse me, I'm not aware of anybody asking for the N one, N six put in there. So that must have come to city, uh, from the city attorney. I know that we've had some discussion on that, but like I said, I'm not sure if anyone promoted, you know, put that language forward.
Okay, because I'm, I do have great concern, um, with just not allowing, I mean, just dismissing parking. I'm concerned with the fact that, that really basically is an amendment of the ordinance without going through the proper amendment process. And although I know zoning administrative decisions can be challenged, they're not easily found and the timeline is very, very short. So if this were to stay, I would require that notice be given to neighbors and that the time limit for challenging such a discretionary decision by the city would not start until that notice is documented. And because of the, the aspect of it and, and this being brought forward because of a parking, I mean, one main concern that we routinely heard was parking concern. And I do hear that routinely from R one A and R one B people is that the appeal for that decision, the escrow would be waived. I do like the, uh, change of removing the floors for occupancy. One concern I would have is that I know some bedrooms are quite large and can accommodate more people safely. And so I don't know if two per bedroom, and some bedrooms are very tiny and maybe two cannot fit in it. I don't know if that would burden the review, but I would like to find an equitable way to address what is a safe occupancy if it's based on just bedrooms. And, um, sorry, I had a comment and it should have been with the parking. I also appreciate, so the parking is based on our zoning ordinance parking. And that is dependent, um, so like the C V B area has different parking requirements. So I know someone was concerned about that. So it's really, this would be based on what is re, the basis of the base number under the zoning ordinance. And the numbers in here are actually, um, less, require fewer. And I think that's not going in the right direction, again, for at least R one A and R one B. And this would be an opportunity for what people usually call an overlay zone where areas are much more residential in the area, residential area in nature. And our general standard is that there are two dwelling, there are two parking spaces for each unit with three bedrooms or less. And for a single family residence of four or more bedrooms, there's one additional space. So I would like to see something for parking spaces, not just based on the number of people, but also based on the number of bedrooms. But I do believe that one space for up to six people is too few. I think it should be, and I had recommended this to the, to legal, I think it should be one space for up to four people with one or two bedrooms in the unit, two spaces between five and eight people with up to three bedrooms and an additional, uh, space if there were more bedrooms. And three for the twelve person, um, up to twelve people, again, dependent on the bedroom commensurate with the zoning. And this is for the health, safety in our neighborhoods to ensure that parking isn't over the sidewalk. I know that's not an uncommon occurrence and that's what we're trying to address are some of these things. And just, I do think that, um, I do appreciate the concern of the certificate being in the window. I think that's something that we could discuss further. Kelly, I mean, do you see issues where people, if they only rent, um, certain times of the year, if they have that certificate removed during non rental periods?
I don't see an issue with that. For the most part, most of our enforcement action, I would say, related to certificates not being picked up is during the winter months. Folks aren't, are not here to get them, to put them in the house. The agents can do it, but, um, primarily folks are not renting. There are a few who do, but, um, a lot of certificates do sit at the, at customer service during the off season.
But there's something in the window, would there be a problem if it's not in the window during?
The information is on B S and A online, it's not a problem for us at all. Um, and I know that most of the rental community would prefer the certificates not to be there.
So I'm, if, if, if a person who lives there ten, eleven months a year and rents it out for a month or so, would, if they're living there, would they be allowed to remove it? But if it's not, because if it's vacant and the, it's in the window, if there's an emergency, that gives a contact, quick contact information.
I think that gets, um, unfortunately gets messy enforcement wise. So now we don't know whose certificate is supposed to be up and whose certificate is supposed to be down. And that creates some difficulty for staff enforcement wise.
Understood, thank you, that helps a lot. And one thing I, I've noticed, so I was at a town hall, um, that Representative Andrews held and he was discussing the S T R ordinance at the state level and they were actually looking, they are actually proposing a thirty mile distance from the S T R. We have a forty-five mile distance. If that state law were to pass, we would need to bring it back to state because we couldn't have something broader. And so that might be something that we might want to consider amending at this time.
We can cross that bridge when we come to it.
That's something I think that the council as a whole could discuss. I don't think it would be a unilateral decision. And I, I have heard from more than one person about, um, having more, having just S T Rs in general, um, as opposed to the, um, the types that we have and looking at the total number of personal business, non exempt, exempt. And I do see benefit from comments with regard to like the attached condos and apartments. Those tend to be lower price for sale. It's a smaller footprint and that would be more commensurate with our workforce housing. So I would, I would be receptive to further discussion on having those no longer exempt. I do appreciate the P U D aspect, um, of that, despite me having raised it real trailside. But I would like to revisit having, um, attached condos, apartments. but I would like to revisit having attached condos, apartments not exempt. And I would support putting in a, a number for caps. I think that is really more of a discussion for the short-term rental ordinance, not the ordinance before us, but I just wanted to raise that as something to keep in mind, because it was raised several times. And for penalties, what I would like to see, and I've said this before, is I would like to see, if we have to go to court, that the legal fees and court costs are, are shouldered by the person taken to court if the city prevails, so that the costs incurred by the city are not added to the costs that are then distributed across the short-term rental permit that's shouldered by everybody.
Wendy.
Um, okay. So a lot of good points have been brought up already, and I do agree with a lot of them. Let me try to point out a few. I did appreciate the idea of removing the extra occupants per floor versus just bedroom. I think that would kind of help bring down the number and keep things a little bit calmer in our neighborhoods potentially. And I wasn't sure about the point that George raised with the two dwelling units on a parcel lot. My mind just went to duplexes, of which we have quite a few around the city, so I know we're gonna look into that, but I feel like there was a reason that that was put in there that made sense to us. The parking calculation, looking at one space for up to six people, if they're all grown people coming from different places, I just think that that is definitely not enough. And the people that brought up parking during the public comments, when we've talked about that, as a council, it's about in the winter when you have to park off-street because of street cleaning. You have to have enough spaces so that people aren't in the street impeding the snow removal. So it's not just summer. And the impossibility clause, I would call it, I am a little bit worried about that as well. Would prefer for us to either rework it or take it out. And then I did like Mary's idea about a parking overlay that would kind of give the Northshore Resort homes that don't have any parking, and they historically have not had it, that would give them still a way to reside or rent there, but then kind of keep our neighborhoods with adequate parking off-street. That might be it for now.
Yeah.
Thank you. Joe.
Okay. As I suspected, we got a lot of them covered. And to start off, we got four comments tonight, and a couple of emails, people saying, well, the public didn't get to give any input. That's exactly what happened tonight. You all gave us input, and we're fleshing that out right now. And based on what the public input, and then my list, parking, I think we've covered that, posting stuff in the window. I know the last time we looked at stuff like this, maybe George will remember too, we said it's in the B S A. Why do we need it in the window? And I don't recall why we thought we needed it in the window, so.
Right.
Somebody who remembers.
Yes, it was a year ago.
Yeah.
And city council said, I thought you all agreed, we don't need it in the window. That was a year ago.
No.
In fact, Wendy brought up that she, she thought it might sort of creates a situation that was not safe. Do you remember that?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't think that I did that, but I want to be able to.
Oh, we're letting Jeff talk.
Yep. I think there was some concern about people tampering with homes, and then a great point was made about if you're not home, and it's not being rented, and people know there's no one there, but of course, if it's not shovelled, then there's no lights on. But anyway, so maybe that's something else we need to talk about. Give us an input again. Why did we need the signs? I don't remember why we need the signs with the B S A. So then the other thing, no special events, George talked about that. Single family, I got five comments tonight here about that. I know we got emails about that, and so we're looking at that. Mary and George both covered that one. Probably the only thing, I guess, let me speed this along. On page 17, when it talked about violations and three strikes, I think we need to flush that out more. You know, I, I don't think that someone that doesn't get their trash can back right away is a strike versus someone that has people sitting in a room that doesn't have legal egress, you know? I think, so we need to kind of flesh that out. And if, if I'm wrong, and the rest of you think it's fine, then we also need to do a better job of explaining it to the public how we envision that working. And then I also thought on page eight, when we talked about the transfer of an S T R, there seemed to be confusion about that. One of the guests this evening said, you know, can I leave it to my son? And if it doesn't change hands, you know, then I think it's still registered. But I thought our process, our thought was, when it changed hands, then we want them to register, and maybe I'm wrong, but so, and that tells me that's something else we need to flesh out about the transfers. Let me see if there was anything else I had. Remember, people mentioned enforcement. We always worry about enforcement, and we want stuff on the books that we can enforce. I think that's it. Yep, that was all I had.
Okay. Thank you. I had a question, because just somebody in the audience asked, what was the rationale for the insurance of having at least $1 million of liability insurance? Can someone explain that?
Well, I think that came out of maybe some conversations about requiring that. And I think they've seen that in other communities, but I think that was just something that had been brought up, and that, like, when we do special events, I think we require to think $1 million.
I know, but whoever asked in the audience, I thought they needed more information about why we do that. So the idea is that people who have, who own an S T R property need that much insurance, and that's the number we pick, because that's what it is for special events.
Yes, I believe that was a discussion.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. I just have a question about, I think we're all in consensus about removing the two per floor. It sounded like that. Another thing was, some people said parking should be the same as it is for residents. So correct me if I'm, if I'm totally wrong, but I'm a resident, and when we have my whole family home, we fill the, our driveway as much as we can, which is two or three cars. And the other boyfriends or girlfriends find parking on the street, and sometimes it's on, it's the block behind us. And to us, that's acceptable. So that's personally how I feel. And I do stay in Airbnbs and short-term rentals when we travel, and I've had the owners say, park wherever you can, and we're okay with that. So that's my two cents on parking. I think that was all for me.
Mayor, did Joe have any more comments? I know he had just the one comment.
Joe.
Yeah, back to the occupancy. I agree with George, two per bedroom, nothing per floor, but with a maximum of 10, not 12. So if it's a four-bedroom, it's eight. If it's a five-bedroom, it's 10. If it's a six-bedroom, it's 10. The max can only be 10, not 12. And the rationale is, the average family in this country is four people. The average in this town is less. We're talking about properties in residential streets, so it should be somewhat similar to that residential street. To have 12 people in a home on a residential street is not the norm. So two per bedroom seems very lenient, plus unlimited infants under 24 months. So 10 should be the max, and no higher than that regardless of number of bedrooms, but two per bedroom. So if it's a two-bedroom home, it would be four.
Anything else?
No, I'd just like to have the bedrooms checked out again, because I was told today by a contractor that in other towns, in one town in particular, this issue of two egress, meaning a window and a door, is very important. And it's for safety, and this is all about safety. Then the last comment about the insurance, most short-term rentals are LLCs. The reason you have an LLC is to stop yourself from being sued, so the owner of an LLC can protect themselves because it's an LLC. Well then, where does that put somebody that falls down the steps because of faulty steps? So if we're gonna make this all about the, the people renting the units, then to protect them, they have to have someplace to go. That $1 million protects the person. Flip side is, quite honestly, the person that owns a short-term rental, the LLC, it would behoove them to have $1 million for their own protection, because you can still get around an LLC. So it just makes sense, and it doesn't cost a whole lot more for a million than a half a million. And a lot of people buy umbrellas for their personal home, their personal life, to protect them over and above their right-hand short.
Thank you. Let's talk briefly about maximum occupancy. Joe said 10. George, what would you like?
I, I like 12 myself, but I also am wondering about, we have some properties in South Haven that have an occupancy greater than 12, and are, to me, I mean, if, if you have invested in a property, you modified it, built it to have a certain occupancy, and now we're saying you can no longer have that many people in it? I would wonder, that doesn't sound fair, whether or not that is something we should be doing. Are we getting rid of any opportunity for somebody who's been, had an occupancy greater than 12 since before 2019 to say, yeah, you're okay with that occupancy if it's, you know, been, like, reviewed and approved and, okay?
So you're saying 12 with some flexibility for special cases?
Yeah.
Okay. Jeff?
12 with flexibility.
Wendy?
I think removing the floors, max of 10 makes sense.
Mary?
Yeah, so I am, I want flexibility, so I do appreciate the 10 in residential, although some people have larger homes, so 12 may be okay in residential. Like, R one A, R one B are traditional residential. But I, you know, based on our current zoning ordinance, it was supposed to go down to 12, I believe, starting in 2019. And it's not clear exactly how that was enforced, and I do want to make sure things are better. Oh, no, in 2018, excuse me. And so I do want flexibility for those people who had a, a true grand-parented occupancy before that, I believe, January 1st, 2019. And so, yes, flexibility, but being cognizant of what our current zoning ordinance is actually allowed.
Are you saying 12 with flexibility?
I am, I am saying, um, up to 12 with flexibility.
And I'm saying 12 with flexibility, just so you get a sense of this.
But with my flexibility, I want focus on the grandfathering.
Okay. Jeff, anything more? Wendy, anything more?
On the whole thing?
On anything. And this what's before us.
I thought that Jeff brought up a couple of good points at the end of his comments that I just wanted to say I agree with, but I don't remember which one.
I talked about transferring. We want to make sure people understand that, and I was talking about the strikes, make sure that we have that fleshed out.
Yes, both of those. I thought the same thing when I read that about the violations, like, that I would like to have that kind of clarified, that it would be for serious violations and not, you know, something smaller.
Okay.
That's it.
The part about...
You forgot to ask Mary if she had a final.
I'm getting back to you later, just a minute. The part about that the family must be related by blood, I can see how that is discrimination in certain families. So I would have a really, I would have a problem with that. Mary?
So in that, so this is what is proposed for the definition of a family in our zoning ordinance in the recodification that was based on legal input. So I will be sure to raise that as a concern during the recodification discussion. So the recollection of, my recollection for the certificate is that there was originally decision, discussion about not having it, but then I think it ultimately was that maybe it could be made for a smaller insignia that wasn't so obvious, but that there would be something in the window, because it was easier for enforcement to know if it was a short-term rental. And a couple other things that I thought of as I was looking through here, for the annual registration, it, I would like to see that the expiry date is one year from the previous expiry date for the renewal. Right now, it's dated as the date that it's issued, which could be one month or two months after the previous expiry date, so then there's one or two months free.
If I may. Go ahead.
The, the dates right now on the certificates are based on the inspection, the date that the property passes inspection.
Right, but especially if it's going to be allowed to be rented during the time, and the, you can't do the inspection, then they're getting one or two months free, which isn't fair to those who timely file. And I would actually like to see something that there's incentive for people to timely file, so that it is reissued before the expiry date. And, you know, and I didn't like the wording about, because it inferred the city was at fault, and the city's not at fault if someone doesn't apply with sufficient time to allow for the inspection. And they, I think it's unreasonable for someone to think the inspection can happen in, within one week of the application being filed, depending on the time of year that it's filed. So I would like to see some more working together with respect of both the applicant and the city. And what I mean by that is, the applicants, especially if it's their second, or third, or fourth renewal, they, they should know the process and know the timing, and I can appreciate if staff is out sick or something happens, but try and build in, you know, a buffer. Don't go on the last day, because it, it is now resulting in one month free, and that's not fair to others. And this indicates there, on page 92, it indicated that it was regulated by the zoning ordinance, but really, this is an activity that's also regulated by our police power, so I would like that clarified.
Okay. Kelly, do you need consensus from us on any other issues, or what do you need? Or what would you like?
I would defer to Kate.
Okay.
For me personally, I'm still not clear on the parking consensus. I know you all have spoken about it quite a bit. This parking scheme differs very much from the parking regulations that are in the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance bases the amount of required parking in the R one residential area, single-family residential areas, on the number of bedrooms in a home. The parking requirements are different for multifamily districts and different for business districts, but this parking requirement is based more on occupancy, and I do have concerns about enforcement and determining the amount of parking that's going to apply to an S T R, and whether the ordinance or this code will take precedent in the event of a conflict. And so I, I have still several questions, and I don't know how you all really are feeling about parking. other than wanting to make sure we have enough. I think that that's clear.
On Center Street, there are some short-term rentals on the second story of businesses, I think. Where are those, what's the parking requirement for those people?
Well, it's, if you're in the Central Business District, you get the first unit does not require parking, but any unit after that requires, I think, one parking space per unit.
So, so where everybody parks at Clementine's to go out to eat, someone is entitled to one of those parking spaces? Is that correct?
You mean the lot that they rent?
Pardon me?
When you say the place where Clementine's rent.
On Center Street.
Sure, that parking lot that they rent.
On, on, on-street parking?
Oh, on-street parking. On-street parking really doesn't kind of count. They have to provide the parking either on the site or within, I think, is it 300 feet? From the, from the area. Part of the reason why we don't count on-street parking is because we do have that parking restriction from November to March. No on-street parking.
Okay, thank you.
So I would echo, I know that Kelly and I have talked a little bit, the parking seems to be quite a deviation from what we have zoning-wise. And I know that we're trying to make a holistic kind of parking solution here because we do have so many different parking restrictions and parking requirements. So I think that we may have to review some of that parking on that because it seems to be a bit of a stick point.
And if the, if city staff could give us like two or three options for parking and we could pick one?
We can work with the city attorney and kind of review what some options are and see where we can kind of mix that up.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments before we move on?
Just with, with those parking comments, I just know that the R1A and R1B, I think that's where we need to have the most onsite, the closest onsite parking with our zoning ordinance. And I think there's more flexibility in Monroe Park, the R1C, and also like RM1. I think you could, might be able to do some overlays just based on the zoning districts and the CBD. And I know that there are some instances where it's technically not onsite for different condos because they share the parking area immediately next door. I, I think that's reasonable. So I think those types of things are, could be pretty beneficial. Thank you.
Any other parking comments, George?
So one of the things that, when I hear us talking about overlays, I think of zoning. This is the code of ordinance, it's not the zoning ordinance. And that, I'm concerned that we're kind of mixing the two up. And with everything we've, that I've heard, that we've talked about, we've talked about, there's so many different situations here in the city. We've got Monroe Park, you've got condominiums, you've got the typical standard residential. And to try to come up in a code of ordinances with a parking situation that addresses everything, I think is going to be unwieldy. And I kind of like the idea of having the parking plan submitted by the applicant and the zoning administrator looking at it and deciding, okay, for this situation, this is a good, this is a good parking plan. And it seems like we've got a lot of extra stuff in here that, like, a good point was brought up with the Central Business District. If you have a, an STR in the Central Business District, you might not need a parking space, but yet this requires, this would require it.
Right. All good points. Sounds like parking is in your alley, your wheelhouse. So we trust zoning to figure this out. Just communicate with us. Okay, we're moving on. Thanks for everybody's input. Next, the, we are at 12. City Council will receive an update from Police Chief Natalie Thompson.
Thank you. I wanted to start with an update on July 3rd. From a law enforcement perspective, it went well. There were no significant life safety issues reported. Many thanks to the supporting agencies and the security company who helps keep the events safe for us all. My thanks to all of the SHPD officers, all of whom who worked 12 to 20 hours that day as we all do each year on that date. Blueberry Festival, another big event that went well from our perspective. We did not respond, I apologize. We did respond to many festival-related issues, parking noise, et cetera. We handled six traffic crashes within two days. Luckily, none of which resulted in significant injuries. It's also important to remember that during these festivals and events that we have every weekend during the summer, the police department still responds to the everyday complaints in addition. On Saturday, August 10th, 2024, amid the Blueberry Festival, at approximately 9:20 PM, two of the three officers working that night, Officer Eric Garcia and Officer Cooper Carnes, responded to a medical call for an unresponsive 46-year-old male. The officers arrived before any additional first responders, which is typical. Normally, the police officers, we respond to assist chaise on life events, especially cardiac events or when people are unresponsive. They arrived before any other first responders. They immediately began CPR and utilized the AEDs that we have in each patrol car, which all officers are trained on, and were able to resuscitate the individual prior to chaise arrival. The officers' quick actions, response, saved this man's life. An official life-saving award will be presented at an upcoming police department meeting. Next, I've got June and July calls for service statistics. So for the month of June, for the city, we handled 390 calls for service. In South Haven Township, we handled 156. And then for the month of July, we handled 423 calls for service in the city and then 199 in South Haven Township. And then Sergeant Pat Carlato, who accompanied me tonight, he is in the back. He did an outstanding job. He, he generated some information to elaborate on these numbers a little bit. So I'm going to just summarize some of those for you. And these are for the month of July. So year-to-date, right now, our total calls for service are 3,239 overall. And then for the month of July, he's broken down two different categories of what we respond to. There's criminal categories and then there's non-criminal calls. So the crime categories, we responded to for the month of July, 32 assaults, one arson, 27 larcenies, three larcenies of a motor vehicle, four burglaries, eight frauds, eight disorderly persons, 13 trespassing, 23 animals at large, six property damage, six hit-and-run accidents, three sex offenses, and one weapons offense. So that's a summary of the criminal complaints. And then the non-criminal calls, we had 196 traffic stops, 10 injury accidents. Those are crashes where individuals were injured. 37 assists to chaise, 34 alarms, 73 general assists. And that can range pretty much from everything under the sun. Someone's got a flat tire, someone has a bat in their garage. I mean, a general assist is just anything. So those can encompass anything. Six missing persons, 22 welfare checks, 19 suspicious situations, three peace officers standbys, 26 parking problems, seven VIN inspections, and five civil disputes. And then we have a graph for traffic enforcement. Especially during the summer, we have a lot of different requests for traffic enforcement because naturally in the summer, we have a lot more people in town. And I think the officers have done a really great job, especially over the last couple of years, in really enforcing the traffic enforcement. So what Sergeant Carlato did is he compiled a graph that shows the most common accident intersections in our area. And this includes the city and the township, which is what we cover. And this is from January 1st of this year to present. So the highest number of crashes that we respond to in our area would be I-196 Overpass on Phoenix, that area. The second is I-196 in general in our area, which stretches from mile marker 20 to 18. The third would be Phoenix and 73rd, followed by Phoenix and Blue Star, that's number four. And then, we're getting away from the highway, Phoenix and Center Street. And from there, it's M-43 and Blue Star. And then M-140 and Blue Star and Phoenix and Broadway are tied. So you can kind of see the, just because there's more traffic, obviously up by the highway, you're naturally going to have more crashes. But then, as we get into town, Phoenix and Center, Phoenix and Broadway, that's not surprising. So he did a great job on compiling this graph. And then accidents by time of day. So several of us tried to guess when, when do you have the most chance of getting into a car crash? And so for the crashes we respond to, boy, this is color. 60% of the crashes we respond to occur between 11:00 AM and 2:00 PM in the afternoon. That's followed by 48% of them are between 3:00 o'clock and 6:00 o'clock, which is when people are driving home from work. But then the number one time we respond to crashes is between 11:00 AM and 2:00 PM, which I thought was interesting. Just some notable trends that we see. And some of these are particular to summer, but also year-round. We've had an increase in the number of larcenies from a motor vehicle. And luckily, those are from unlocked motor vehicles. I know some people with really nice cars like to leave their cars unlocked so they don't sustain damage. But generally, what we respond to are people going through cars that are unlocked. So we like to recommend lock your vehicle and just don't leave your purse or a wallet in view because we, once in a great while, we will have someone smash the window if they look in and see something of value. They're generally not going to smash the window if they can't see something in clear view. But as a general rule, it is always better to lock your vehicle, even for a short period of time. You're running into the store for five minutes, you would be surprised. Like I said, hide valuables. You know, you go to the wellness center. Don't leave your purse on the seat. Leave it at home, put it in your trunk. And for anybody, not just, you know, women always in the evening park and wallet areas. You're going to the store, you know, the street near your home. Lighting is a good thing, lighting is safety. And then use your alarms and anti-theft devices, those work. And then we just kind of have a summary of what I've gone over, the Blueberry Festival, upcoming community events. I'm sorry, a past one. We participated in the National Night Out back on August 6th. The weather wasn't so great, but we, we had a pretty good turnout. And then upcoming events, the city, we will be doing our Touch a Truck event on September 19th. So I'm sure Kate and Kim will have more details on that, but we're all looking forward to that. So again, thanks to Sergeant Carlato for compiling more than just the numbers. And the last thing, so everyone knew I'm going to be retiring and decided to just retire a couple of months earlier. Just wanted to get a, get a start on life after work. So I will be officially retiring on October 1st.
This is just getting worse.
Yeah, well, it's a few months, but it's just, like I said, I want to get on with life after working as a police officer. I will still be in this area. I won't be chief, I'll be Natalie. So I'm actually looking forward to, I tell my family I'll be a normal person. They're like, are you abnormal? But I do want to thank everybody, my officers, you all, the community. And that's why I'm staying here, so.
Thank you.
I have a question for the chief.
Oh, go ahead.
Hi, Chief, I had a question for you. You mentioned the number of welfare checks you did. And I just recently had gotten some questions and resonance about, how would you make a request to the police to do a welfare check?
Right. And, you know, this is a really good question because we are careful when we do these. Because we always have to be careful if it's maybe a bad person, like a stalking situation. So dispatchers and the officer, we do, we vet who is calling for a welfare check and why. And generally, the welfare checks that we do are typically, I'm, I'm older. But maybe older elderly people who live alone, they have a medical condition or it's someone, you know, maybe who lives by themselves, maybe not older. And there is some concern that they have missed a doctor's appointment, they haven't responded to a phone call or a text. Our local mail delivery drivers are wonderful people. We've even had a few calls from newspaper mail delivery drivers. So we always vet a call before, you know, we do this. But that's generally the situation. And then what we'll do is we will never call someone back and say, hey, so-and-so is at the house. Because if you think about that, what if the... So we will generally, when we can make contact with the person, I mean, sometimes it's not a good result when we get there. But if they are okay, we'll just say, hey, so-and-so was concerned about you. And we will have the person that we're doing a welfare check on, if they choose to, just say, hey, this person's really worried about you. We will have them make contact with the caller. Because this came up a few years ago and an officer just told the person. And then the person was like, hey, I didn't want this guy to know where I was. And we're like, ah. So we, it's a very good question. But we do vet what we're, why we're doing a welfare check. And then just the safest thing to do is, and sometimes we'll even help the person if they're like, oh, yeah, I want to call so-and-so. We'll help them make contact and do it that way.
Yeah, the question, one, one person asked was about a senior citizen, but the other one was about a person they were concerned about with some mental changes, that the person was not getting out of the ordinary. But then, so then they would call the dispatch?
Yep, that is how we're dispatched. And they'll relay the information. And, you know, sometimes we'll talk to that person more if we have a phone number and get more information. Sometimes we'll go right to the residence, the apartment of the house. And, you know, in some circumstances, if we have enough information, obviously, we, we have enough. We will gain entry into a home is, you know, if there's a very serious concern that something might be wrong. And I purchased a few doors and windows. And it's, it's always better to be, you know, safe than sorry. And we've never had anyone get really upset if we're busting a lock open. But, you know, we always announce ourselves. But those are the very extreme, you know, situations where we really think something might be wrong. But I think it's good. We've seen an increase in welfare checks, you know, for a variety of reasons. But I think it's really good that people care and want to be involved. It's, you know, because for a while, it seems like people didn't want to be involved or mind your own business. But to me, that's a sign.
Of a good community.
People are good, absolutely.
And we're certainly sad that you're leaving, but you've earned it, so.
Yeah, like I said, I'll still be wrong.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, I wish you all the best in your retirement.
I'm so happy for you and bummed out for us that you're leaving. My question is about the social district for the summer. Have, has that been much of an issue enforcement-wise so far? If you, I don't know if you can speak on that.
I really, I can't really answer that. I mean, we've been so busy this summer. I mean, we have a lot of alcohol-related incidences. I don't, without looking, I don't know how many we can track to the social district. I know we've, through the years, we've had an increase in drunk-driving accidents, but again, I have no way of saying what the cause of that is. I mean, I'd need, we'd have to go through a lot of data. I, I can't really answer that.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't, I don't think it's been like, oh my gosh, it's just out of control, we have fights anymore. It's been a, a normal summer. I think so far it's been very, very busy. So maybe the next city council meeting, whether it's me or one of the sergeants, they can maybe better look at the reports that we've taken and answer the question a little bit better.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Natalie? Thank you and your department and your staff for Blueberry Festival, making sure that everybody had fun and in a safe way. So we appreciate you and your entire staff, so thank you.
Thank you, I'll pass it on to the officers.
Thank you. Now, we are at twelve A. Questions about Pontefex.
Okay.
Sure, I know Kim's on her way up here, but this was a study that was, Kim and I had talked about, and considering some of the recent changes with our staffing, recent changes to the law with minimum wage staffing, that many of us are going to webinars and try, just trying to understand and get our arms wrapped around what the new state Supreme Court ruling really means for us. And knowing that we've, we've participated with a number of MML studies, but they don't always go very far into what our total compensation is. Kim and I kind of discussed about bringing a compensation study, because we've got a number of positions that are open and trying to be competitive with other, other areas, so that's why we put this together. It's not a budgeted item, but we do have some, some extra funds as we closed our year last year, and I think this would be very helpful in understanding where the city falls with other communities.
Mary, this, this is what you wanted removed from the consent agenda, so what is your question?
I was just, how many outstanding positions do we currently have?
That are not filled at this time? I have two police officers that I cannot get candidates for. We're going to have to get creative with how we recruit police officers, so that, those two. We are currently in the process of doing interviews for the Planning and Zoning Administrator Assistant to replace Luke. Beach Enforcement, those seasonal staff, we have a lot of folks that just left this past weekend because they're going back to college, so seasonal positions, we're losing staff right there, right now. But we are finding that it, we have to get a little bit more creative with our recruitment for high-level positions and non-union positions.
Are the, are they all non-union positions then that you're looking at for this?
Currently, yes. I mean, besides the police officer positions, yes.
Okay, yeah, well, police officers, everyone's having problems with police officers.
I know, I know.
So, and will this provide, will the results provide us key performance indicators?
I'm hopeful. We are going to be looking at job descriptions. One thing with the MML survey is that it gives just a very broad overview. So for example, it'll say a planning administrator or a zoning administrator. Well, here we have a planning slash zoning administrator. They don't account for short-term rental coordinators, they don't account for marina staff, beach safety, they don't have those type of jobs. So we're going to, what I'm hopeful is that with Pontefex, we'll be able to look at these specific positions that we have here, and to get a better idea if we're on track with the compensation. And if we do find that we are off with compensation for some of our staff, they're going to give us gradual steps that we can implement, so it's not going to be all of a sudden, you have to pay all of these staff members so much more and it's going to break the bank. It'll be more gradual steps along that way.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Does anyone else have questions? Joe?
Do we have qualified, qualified person or persons that can write grants, especially as it pertains to affordable housing and possible construction and all of those types of grants? Do we have someone qualified that can do it?
I'm not going to steal Kate's thunder for later, but we have made a job offer to an assistant city manager, and that person has grant-writing experience.
Thanks.
Don't mean to steal that from Kate.
Well, the cat's out of the bag.
And Kate had mentioned that this is not a budgeted item, but he was able to find at least eleven thousand dollars from my HR budget, that things that I probably won't be moving forward with this next fiscal year, one of which is a Certified Labor Relations Leader certification I was going to take through MSU. That falls in line with the same time, I was recently notified that I've been accepted into the MML's Women's Municipal Leadership Program. So that one's a free program versus paying for one, and so I'm excited I'll be, be able to go through that, and that's going to save us a little bit of money there.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on.
I would move to approve the proposal for Pontefex Consulting Group in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for compensation study, for a compensation study.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to public comment, citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda, and you have up to five minutes.
Good evening, Rachel Sankowski, two-five-one Hubbard Street. It's been a long meeting, been a long evening. Earlier in the evening, somebody that stood at this podium mentioned the city accommodating non-compliance, and that struck me. I'm here tonight to speak with you about a decision that was made at a most recent planning commission meeting on August eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, regarding agenda item number six under actionable new business, and the approval of an application for a special land use permit relative to two-four-nine Hubbard Street. You may already be aware of some concerns that have been raised regarding this approval as communications from a number of citizens have been forwarded to you. It is clear that to fulfill the application process, a final site plan must be submitted. This was not the case. A final site plan for two-four-nine Hubbard Street has not been submitted. Consequently, the planning commission has prematurely approved a special land use permit. Tonight, I would like it on the record that I'm requesting a full review of this special land use application and approval process by the city attorney, a response back from staff relative to such, and an encouragement to the planning commission to revisit this agenda item at the next commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Lisa Crouppier, five-sixty-one Indiana. Today in my mail, I received a notification of code infraction from the city, from Rick Loper, via Rick Loper. I have had, over the years, I consider Rick competent at his job, and I do enjoy the times that I do get to speak with him. But last Thursday, I saw him outside of my house, he was taking pictures of my candidate signs in my yard, and I went out there and kind of gave him a hard time. I said, you have got to be kidding. With all the emails the city has received about candidate signs on the rows, the right of right-of-way's, other signs, you know, permanent, permanent signs advertising short-term rentals, I said, you have got to be kidding. And he, I wasn't quite sure if he was actually going to do anything, but I did get this notice, notification of code infraction today. It told me that I needed to call him, and, let me see, should there be no, you are required to contact the code enforcement official at the number below no later than ten calendar days. So I contacted him, and I notified him. I said, I don't know what I'm supposed to notify you about, but I, I mean, it was a message, of course, it didn't, he didn't pick up. And so I notified him. I don't know, I, I mean, I, I do know, I believe you should be aware, or if you are not, I believe you, I believe you are aware, because I know this has happened before. In two thousand and twenty-two, I know that a resident came to the city and let them know that there is a Supreme Court, was a ruling in two thousand and fifteen, and the U.S. Supreme Court has ruled that the display of political and other types of signs on residential property is a unique, important, and protected means of communication, and towns cannot restrict the display of such signs. And I believe you all would agree, there's a very important election this fall, in November, and I am doing my part. Each of the signs that I display are unique and important. And I, I got this letter. So another thing you may not be aware of, I live in a two-unit condo building, and there are two unique residences there. The front yard is community property, according to my HOA, it is community property, so technically, eight signs could be displayed, the way that I see it. And I would still be compliant. I also am aware there are other citizens in town displaying a similar number of signs as I have in my yard, and, or more, and they have not received any notification from the city. So I would not like to think that I am being targeted. I would not like to believe that I'm being discriminated against, but I, I feel kind of, you know, that.
You have one minute.
I've been singled out. So I want to know, in ten days, I mean, I, I did notify the code enforcement officer. My letter says here that, should there be no substantive response from me by that time, which I did, I gave substantive response, the city shall move forward with enforcement proceedings, which may include the issuance of a civil infraction notice of violation involving a fifty-dollar per day fine. And like I said, I am protected by the Supreme Court to do what I am doing, and all costs associated with the city having to hire appropriate services to correct said infraction, as well as a fifty-dollar administrative fee. I really hope that somebody will contact me and let me know that this will be excused, and, because like I said, I am protected by.
Your time is up.
Supreme Court.
Your time is up.
Decisions. Thank you.
Anybody else? We are moving on if there are no more comments. City manager comments.
Thank you, city council. I did want to kind of go over a couple of items. I'm sure many of you have seen that we did put a press release up. We've had a number, well, a number of our beaches have been affected by green algae or cladophora, and we've been doing our best to remove some of that. It is not toxic to humans, but it does kind of bring in some really nasty smells, and then does attract a lot of birds that leave fecal matter. So we've been cleaning that up as it washes up, but again, it's, it's not toxic, and it, like I said, it's naturally occurring, and we've been seeing this for the last couple of weeks, so our efforts are continuing there. I am working with our economic development consultant, Jim Hettinger, to put together our RFP for Overton, trying to get that here to city council. I know we want to make some movement on that. And with Griffin Graham's leaving, we've kind of got a little stopped up, a little lurched. I can tell you, I've, I've taken on a lot more, just to keep the ball rolling, but Jim will be helping me out with that, so hopefully we can have something to review by the council next couple of weeks. Speaking of, a little bit late with staff, if we can, just have some patience with the building department. We do have one member that's out on maternity leave, congratulations to Megan. But we also do have Luke's absence is being felt. It is really now just left to Kelly and Kelly, so if you're, you know, looking to get a permit, or you've turned in something you haven't heard, we're working through it as best we can, so we are trying to get that done. I would also mention that we have started scheduling interviews for that planning and zoning assistance, so we are making progress, but just some patience would be nice. I would also say that, Kim kind of let the cat out of the bag, but we are pleased to say that we have made a conditional job offer to a candidate. We're working through some last-minute, well, some last, kind of hiring things such as drug tests and things like that, screening, so that, once everything comes back, I'm happy to make that announcement. And then lastly, we have received an application from Emily, Life Saving Robot. As with all donations, there is a staff review, as well as a review and recommendation from advisory boards and commissions before any donation would come to this board. Currently, we're doing staff review, and Parks Commission has reviewed it at least once as part of a discussion topic. There's still more questions that need to be answered before we can bring that up to city council, but we're making our way through that process. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilperson comments, we'll start with George.
All right. Thank you to everyone who came in person today or tuned in to tonight's meeting. The SDR ordinance is a priority for us, and, and the draft we went over today was not intended to be a final product. As Jeff mentioned, we were looking for feedback, and we got it. I do think that this draft is probably a good balance in that I think both sides are opposed to it, so. That's my comments.
I noticed that too.
Yeah.
Thank you. Joe?
First, I'd like to thank the Kiwanis Club and the Rotary Club and all the volunteers that helped them to put on the pancake baking event. It collected thousands of dollars in profit, which most of that money comes back in one form or another to the community, so it's, it's a wonderful thing they did. As far as the short-term rentals, my only comment is, some people may want to paint this as a black and white issue, and it's not. It's all gray, and we live in a gray world, not a black and white world. And there is no one definite answer. George is right when he said, we made no one happy, and maybe that's not such a bad thing. But I, I, I think in the last six months or so, actually since last November, we've made real strides moving forward to at least addressing it, going over, going over, and going over, some of it behind the scenes, but you're starting to see it come forward now to the public where you can make comments. We all listened, we all adjusted some of our thoughts on the regulatory part, and next will come the zoning part. But I think we are getting closer, and I'm still optimistic that when this is all done, it'll be better than what we started with. And I will say that we are listening, and I can tell you, there is not one single day that goes by Monday through Saturday. Sunday, I'm seem to get a break, but residents talk to me everywhere about short-term rentals, and I listen. Unfortunately, there's a lot I can't say because some of these are closed sessions, so they have to be kept that way, but we are listening. And I think it's reflected in our initial proposal and the regulatory, and I think it'll be listened and put in the suggestions for the zoning as well. So we're, I think we're getting there, so if, if it's possibly patient, I think you're going to see good results.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes, I would like to echo everyone's participation, and I think that we did see some consistent statements on each side, and hopefully you will appreciate our taking those into consideration. For the zoning ordinance part, that should be probably before the planning commission at the next meeting in September. the planning commission at the next meeting in September. I also want to give a shout out to not only the Rotary, but the great guys from the Airport Authority, the fly-in, fly-out, that, that was buzzing throughout the day, helicopter rides, and there was one pilot who came in with a, who, whose co-pilot was a German Shepherd, and that was pretty cool. Yeah, so I do, listening to Chief Thompson, and I wish her all the best on her retirement, but with regard to fraud, so, you know, I had mentioned that I had gone to a town hall by Attorney General Nessel, and lo and behold, this past week, a notice pops up on the phone about a $2 charge, and most people don't think about a $2 charge. Well, it was a scam, and what happens is, you think it's nothing, you approve it, and then they come back with a larger charge. So I just, everyone's cautious, but be diligent with your cards. Just $2 can turn into 200, 2,000, and if you let that first charge go, it's more difficult for the other ones. So that was very timely of Attorney General Nessel, and as soon as I saw that it was just $2, the light went on, and I was like, reject, don't recognize it, and sure enough, it was a scam. I do want to acknowledge Ms. Shepherd for all the work she's done to make the National History Club great, all the national championships that she, competitions that she's gone to is just wonderful, and it was wonderful. Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing Hayden today. And thank you, city manager, for talking earlier today. I had inquired about some matters for the lifeguard program, and had indicated a desire to have a closed session with litigation counsel to better understand what's going on in that aspect of it, to help us hopefully move forward and have a decision on lifeguards, and potentially have someone independent to help us look at what a program would look like in costs and liabilities for that whole program. And...
Wendy?
I also just want to say that I appreciate everyone who wrote to us and came out tonight and sat through this three-plus hour-long meeting. While some of you are still here, and you're awesome, but thank you to everyone who was here earlier, too, for giving us some input. And, yeah, like others have mentioned, we definitely kind of take that into consideration and adjust where we think we should, and I think we end up with a pretty good product in the end. And I just had a question for Kate, if I may, about the beach algae, well, I guess it's just a beach question, because I know that some southwest Michigan beaches were closed with high bacterial levels. Does our, do our beaches get tested for bacteria?
Yes, so two to three weeks, and that's with the Bamburn County Health Department. So they come out and they do their testing, and then they post the results on Beach Guard, and then they usually send the results. I have not gotten the results from them, but I do know that the results were posted on the Beach Guard, but usually, they, they email those, but I have not received them.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. And that's it.
And my comments are pretty similar to everybody else's. Thanks to all the guests that were here, all the ones that spoke, you hearty folks that are still here. As Wendy said, it's been a long meeting. And Mary mentioned Julie Shepherd, and Kim Wise tried to shout her out, too, but there was a little commotion. Julie has run the history club for a number of years, and as Mary mentioned, 15 years in a row, they've made it to nationals, so that's very impressive. Speaking of impressive, Hayden Wasikizik, he presented this morning to all the teachers at the school, and he is so good, his microphone didn't work. He shut it off and just raised his voice and was able to project through the theater, and he didn't miss a beat. He's, he's an impressive young man. There was something else, but now I'm forgetting. Oh, yeah, it was about school. Teachers reported today, was a good feeling, a lot of new faces, and all new teachers, administrators are moving around. If you haven't heard, had a, had a really good feel today, so I'm excited for when the kids get there next week.
Great. It's always exciting.
Yeah.
I love back-to-school stuff. Speaking of that, the Back to School Bash with the Rams is August 24th, 11 to 2. This will be a great event. I know some city departments will be there, and they need volunteers. Do people contact you, Kim Wise?
They can go straight to the school's website.
Okay. Go to the school's website to volunteer, shps.org. So thank you. Thanks to everyone who came tonight, too, and we value your ideas and your input. There's no further business. We're adjourned.